Good evening. This study session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 4:02 PM Tuesday, January 25, 2022 in room 137 of the Edison Building. This board acknowledges this site and all our PS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations on the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely on youtube.com/isd535 where the livestream video may be found. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pikel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Director Amundson.
Here.
Clerk Barlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Treasurer McLoughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan. And Director Workman.
Thank you, Ms. Severson. 1.02 of the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is approved. 3.01, superintendent search. This is a discussion item. And at this time, we are very happy to welcome Dr. Ted Blasing. I'm assuming who we see on the screen is Dr. Blasing.
Great to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And is Dr. Chris Nacastro also with you?
Not certain if Chris has been able to log into the meeting yet.
Okay.
We're going to go ahead.
All right. So we will welcome her when she comes. And these are representatives from Hazard Young, Atea, Atea, and Associates who will share information with us about our superintendent search. Dr. Blasing.
All right. Thank you. We've got a busy 55 minutes in front of us, so let's launch right into this. I believe you have received an agenda for this meeting earlier, and we hope to march right through that. The first item is to kind of review the search process. And I recognize that within the past year, you went through a search when Kent was chosen as the interim. And I was able to watch part of that online, not all of your meetings, but the ones that were online, I was able to watch that. So some of this is going to be repetitive, some of it is going to be a little different from what you experienced a year ago. The typical search process is found on page three of the signature search brochure. You'll note that that has in essence two columns to it. And on the left-hand column are those things that you would be doing as board members. And on the right-hand column are those things that we would be doing as search associates during the search. So, for example, the planning meeting with the board, that's happening right now as we speak. And then the community survey, if we choose to, if you choose to do so. And then the development of the leadership profile. Chris and I will spend two full days meeting, albeit virtually, with whomever you want us to meet with. So the seven board members, and then other individuals and groups that you would like us to meet with. And then we take that feedback from the survey and from our individual meetings and our focus group meetings and compile what we refer to as a leadership profile report. The leadership profile report, as I like to say, we have no idea if it's fact or fiction, but it's what people believe and it's what they're telling us. Then we combine that with the feedback from the online survey. When I looked at your online survey from a year ago, you did have, I think you had a rather light response, given the size of the school district and the engagement of your community in the school district. But regardless, if we have the online survey, we would take that data as well and compile and glean it, look for commonalities, and eventually develop desired attributes and desired characteristics. We would bring those back to you for your suggestions, changes, and approval. You have a unique perspective on the school district as board members, unlike others, albeit staff or students or parents or community members. So we want to make certain that those desired characteristics are, as we like to say, roughly right. And that will then guide us as our template, if you will, in recruitment and the screening of candidates. And later, hopefully, it will guide you as you begin to interview candidates for the position. So that's a little bit about the engagement phase. We can talk more about that later on and what's required. And then all of a sudden, we disappear for a while. We spend a lot of time visiting with folks in Rochester, and then we get quiet. And that's the recruitment phase of the search process. Now, this is going to be a little different. We just don't post the position and advertise and then sit back and see, well, let's see who's interested here. In fact, we're pretty aggressive when it comes to the recruitment of candidates, and that kind of is what makes us stand's apart. Lot of phone calling. In bygone days, a lot of cups of coffee that were bought and shared with others to pique their interest in the position. And then when we move down on that chart, that's when you become busy again, in that we would meet with you, present a slate of candidates to you, work with you, just as MSBA did, and developing questions to be used in your first round interviews. We would, we typically will send you a long list of questions, all of them related to major areas of the desired characteristics. And then you would provide feedback on modifications, preference, develop your own questions. Eventually, we will meld those together so that we have an adequate number of questions, not too many, to use during those first round interviews. And the first round interview is rather structured in that each candidate will respond to the same set of questions. Will then meet with you to facilitate the narrowing of the field from likely five or six down to three. We don't have to worry about this tonight, but we'll talk at length about how to structure the full day, we suggest full day, in Rochester, in the community, in the school, or your three finalists. That would include a second interview with you, albeit much less structured, much more informal. The candidates will have had a chance to get to know you, you will have had a chance to get to know the candidates. So that second round interview is more of a conversation, and each candidate's interview will be slightly different based upon what you learned about them during that first round interview. And then we'll meet with you again to hopefully narrow the field to a preferred candidate. So that very quickly is an overview of the search process. Questions?
I've got a question about the timing between the semifinalist narrowing down and the finalist interviews. My recollection of how searches, so when is it that it becomes, the list of finalists becomes public, so that if candidates aren't wanting their names revealed, at what point does it become public?
Good question. As you know, in Minnesota, Minnesota statutes require a great deal of sunshine. It's a bit like being in a fishbowl. Candidates' names become public once we present the slate to you.
So March 29th, according to the.
Yeah, right. Under this proposed calendar, it would be, what would that be?
Yeah, March 29th on our proposed calendar, which I know is just a direct. I know that's just a draft, but the issue I have with that is the last round, Julie and I did a lot of phone calling, and we had a couple of days, two to two and a half days for that, and it wasn't enough because of the difficulty in reaching the people that we wanted to speak with. They were busy professionals who maybe didn't have time to drop everything and have, you know, a 20-minute conversation. And so I'm just wondering if we are going to do that, and unfortunately, we as a board have not had a chance to discuss whether or not that's a key piece. I feel that we uncovered important information during our last process, and I would recommend that we do build in time for various members of the board to do some of our own reference checking, no matter how thoroughly our search firm does it. I think sometimes you like, it's like who you know. Sometimes people are more willing to open up individually. I also know that in far past superintendent searches, we even had board members visit the home districts of the people that they were interviewing. And that is a big thing that I'm not sure that I'm recommending that we do, but I wanted to put it out there to my fellow board members, that that was something that passports have done, was to travel to the district to have meetings and whether it be hanging out in the coffee shop or stopping in the barber shop and saying, what have you heard about the superintendent or what have you? But for sure, if that March 29th date is the date that we can start calling people from the home districts and tell, and again, this is, this is, I think the dates may be changed, but April 9th for the final decision, I think that might be enough time to complete all of that, unless we are anticipating visits to the home districts.
The, let me just comment on that. The, let me, let me just comment on that. Yeah, that, our experience would be that that would be more than enough time. And yes, we encourage the board members to do quite a bit of additional reference phone calling on the candidates. We prefer that you hear the information firsthand. Now, we're going to be doing some screening long before we present a slate to you. However, it's much richer for you to divide up the work based upon the number of candidates that you're meeting with. And that also allows for a far greater number of reference phone calls to be made. Now, in terms of site visits, that was very popular years ago. And then something came along called the Internet and Google. And the flow of information became much richer than just going to the, to the home school district of the finalists. One other point. It's very disruptive to the candidate and to the community that has the new school board that's courting this new superintendent, to have them come into the community. It's quite, it's quite disruptive. And so, we prefer that you do a virtual visit rather than jumping on an airplane or getting in a car and actually going into the community. It certainly can be done. But what we're finding is it's just not a real productive use of time.
So, Dr. Blasing, what you're saying is that you think that the schedule that we have laid out here is pretty realistic, and that it would be, provide enough time for both you and your, your firm, as well as the board, to do the kind of research and reference checking that's appropriate?
Yes, now I want to come back to that. It's a very aggressive schedule. On the HYA website right now, we have over 530 positions posted. Now, not all of those are being led by HYA. Many of them are being led by state associations, other search firms, individual school districts. But that gives you a sense to the amount of turnover that's happening around the country today. So, the candidate pools, we are finding becoming smaller and shallower. Hence, the reason that Chris and I laid out the schedule here to be quite aggressive. We would like to move very quickly on this. Now, having said that, the April 1st and 2nd dates for the board initial interviews, I understand those are but the National School Board Association Conference.
They, they, yeah, they conflict with them, correct?
So you, we may want to move those.
Chair Marvin, another comment?
Yes, Ms. Blasing.
Not that I'm necessarily opposed to working on a Friday/Saturday, but I think those are also Friday/Saturday dates. And one of my concerns is that they're at the tail end of-
Yeah, they are. I'll tell you why. Because those are the dates for the first-round interviews. And likely, you're going to be interviewing a number of sitting superintendents. For many of them, it's easier to travel for an interview on a Saturday so that they don't need to leave their office, for example, on a Thursday, to be there ready on a Friday, et cetera. That's, that's the only reason we did Friday and Saturday. But we can schedule those on whatever day works best for the board.
And, and my point was that that's the tail end of spring break. So I don't know if we want, if we're going to have public input that some people may be out of town, is my concern. But if, if we do it at all like we did the last round, and having people observe and give feedback, that, that might not be the ideal timeframe to do that.
I agree.
Chair Marvin?
Yeah, Mr. Barlow.
Dr. Blasing, so you're hearing us raise two areas of concern. One being spring break, the other being, oh, the NSBA conference. And do you see or view either of those being a potential clog that would slow the process impact? Do you see it as a positive, a negative, a neutral? Because we're aware of it, and we don't, and we share those things so that perhaps you can ask the firm selected, be aware of them, yet at the same time, not see these as a hindrance to your ability to provide the quality service we're, we're expecting and believe in your, your firm capable of providing.
I'm not sure I understand the question, but if delaying this, do we see that as a problem? No. But we do want to move, we do want to move quickly on this.
Well, so if, if we aren't able to accept the proposed dates due to scheduling conflicts, are we proposing to make the calendar more compact or lengthier? Like, would those interviews, if they can't happen on April 1st and 2nd, we can't move them up a week because that's still spring break weekend? So we'd have to move them a week later, correct? Is that what everyone else is thinking based on their calendars? Or two weeks earlier? Which I don't even know how we can do that. Where, where would we trim off two weeks?
Well, Ted, I wonder, we've got the leadership profile report presented on February 22nd, and then a seminar for interviews and final stages of search on March 29th.
Right.
And I understand that the schedule's already aggressive, but would it be possible to move the March 29th date up a week?
Oh. It was shorter recruitment window, but we could, the 29th is a Tuesday, because I understand typically you meet on Tuesdays.
Right.
And so that was the reason that date was chosen. If we moved it to March 22nd, and then go ahead. So then, if we, let's follow that scenario. So if we have the slate presentation and the interview workshop on March 22nd, when would the initial interviews be held then?
Well, they, they couldn't because we can't do either the weekend of the 25th, 26th, or the weekend of the 1st and 2nd if we're trying to avoid spring break. So we'd have to move everything later.
Yeah, I would move it later then. That's an awfully long break.
Well, it's, it's, it's a week-long break, but it's including both Saturdays.
Yes. So then we would move the first-round interviews to the, are you suggesting the 8th and 9th?
Well, I, I don't see an alternative unless we shaved two weeks off and, and did the 18th and 19th. And I don't even know if that's possible under the amount of time that the online survey needs to be open and the amount of time that the position needs to be posted.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's move with that. So then, the initial interviews would be on the 8th and 9th, is that correct?
Well, that's what I'm getting if, if we're talking about, I mean, have we as a board decided that we want to do a Saturday interview date?
We haven't, no, we haven't been able to discuss this in a meeting.
Right. So I guess I'm saying, are there people here who are, are okay with a Saturday date, or opposed to a Saturday? I mean, we haven't even-
I'm fine with it. I'm just concerned if we're looking for a lot of community feedback, people might not be focused on this topic if, if school's not in session.
Right. But if we were doing it the 8th and the 9th, are we all okay with doing this on a Saturday? I know there are people here who have work hours that fall outside of bank hours, so.
What, what if we moved it to the 7th and 8th? And did Thursday, Friday?
Well, I, I don't think we've had anyone-
That actually might be worse for some of them.
Yeah, we haven't, yeah, we haven't had anyone weigh in who might have difficulties. So if we're saying the 8th and the 9th, is everybody, everybody's calendar's clear on those days?
I mean, I feel like they can be. I would say for those of us who work during the week, it's harder during the week to make the time that it is on a weekend. But I also want to acknowledge that other people like to have their weekends.
Right. I mean, granted, this is a once every-
Correct.
Blue moon event. It's not like we're doing it regularly.
So I, I think, Ted, we're hearing that Saturdays, at this point at least, enough people are willing to commit to a Saturday or to, for the process.
Okay. So if we do the initial interview, initial interviews on April 8th and 9th, do we want to continue to meet that Saturday then? Late morning to afternoon to narrow the field? Or would you prefer to come back?
I mean, once we're already here, it might be nice to, although we wouldn't have had the opportunity to do our reference checking to narrow the field, correct?
Well, the, the slate would be presented, tell me again when we would present the slate and do the interview workshop? March 20?
Right now, it's scheduled for March 29th.
Okay, so we'd leave it on the 29th. So that would still leave, let's see here.
Give you a week and a half.
Yeah, that should be plenty of time.
So we're looking now at the board receiving the slate on the 29th, and then interviews on April 8th and 9th. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what I have.
Okay.
And then the second sets of interviews would then get pushed out one week as well?
Okay.
Am I understanding that correctly? So now we're looking at the 15th and 16th as well? Which my calendar tells me is-
That is, that is Good Friday.
Yes, right.
If that's an issue for anyone.
We wouldn't have to do it on Friday. We could move those ahead to Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. That's a pretty quick turnaround. But we always tell the six candidates to hold those dates open on their calendar. So hopefully, that would work for them.
Well, and recently especially, have most districts been doing interviews face-to-face or virtually?
Vir, um, it's, it's been a mix. Most of them are now beginning to go back to face-to-face. I just finished two searches. One last night and one on Friday evening. And in both of those situations, they did face-to-face on both their first-round and second-round interviews.
So in the past, we've done evening interviews on successive evenings. Weekday evenings.
And I'm sorry if I missed this part of the conversation, but when I read the proposal, it seemed like it was more than just an interview. It was also a visit to-
For the second-
The district and the community. That's-
That's correct. So those three days that would be set aside, that's going to be pretty much a full day for the candidate to be in the community. And, and again, we don't have to decide that this evening. But we're, we're going to want to lay out a, a pretty full day for the candidates to meet with community, staff, whomever you would choose. Also do a tour of the community. And then a second-round interview with you. And normally, a dinner with the candidate at the end of the day, something a little more social. Because they will have had a long day and a chance to get to know you a little bit better, and for you to get to know them a little bit better as well.
So on this calendar where it says April 6th, 7th, 8th, but now we're talking about moving that a week later, are those dates requiring board presence so that we should all be looking at our calendars? And I know people have work events. Or is that just a portion of the board because we're not actually meeting?
It would, no, you do not need to block your calendars for the entire day. That's, that's a very good question, by the way. Thank you for raising that point. No. For example, two of you, if you were available to greet the candidate early in the morning for breakfast and go over the day's schedule with them, and then you would hand them off to whomever is conducting the next piece of that day. So for example, you might hand them off to central office administrators who would then meet with them, who might then hand them off to a representative group of certificated staff or to a community group. Many times, boards like to have a meet-and-greet session that's open to the community. Usually, that's held late afternoon, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon. And then perhaps a break for the candidate and before they meet with the board for their second-round interview. And then at the conclusion of that, a dinner. So that quickly is one way to structure the day. So as you can see, the board would not need to be available for the entire day.
Okay, and so, but, but we would be having three school board meetings in a row those evenings? Because that's what the interviews are, correct?
Correct.
So again, the people with other commitments. And I'm, I'm getting that the 6th, 7th, 8th would become the 13th, 14th, and 15th?
The 15th is Good Friday. If you wanted to move that out to Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we can certainly do that.
Okay, so that could change. And again, what does that do to everybody else's calendars?
I have a couple of questions. Is the idea that we have one candidate with us each day?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other question that I'm perhaps not as good of keeping track with, I think we have a study session scheduled already for April 12th. I don't know if that's something movable or what's planned for that.
Yeah, they do have the annual calendar there. Oh. Thank you. We're checking.
Got it.
April 12th is nothing. It's an NSBA conference session, reports discussion.
Oh.
But it's not nothing.
Something that can get-
Easily movable.
Easily, okay.
And Director Amundson, I guess to answer your question, I think we sort of went through this in the earlier process, too, that it's, it is very aggressive, it is a lot of time. But those of us who work other jobs are figure, figure out a way to manage it, whether it was difficult or not.
Right. I mean, the sooner we make the decision, then that gives me the opportunity to do what I need to do.
So if we were looking at the 6th, 7th, and 8th moving back a week, would we move it to 13th, 14th, 15th? Or would we move it to 12th, 13th, 14th to incorporate the Tuesday night instead of the?
Well, Friday night is Good Friday. I don't think that's an option.
So it would for sure then become April 12th, 13th, 14th?
Got it.
And then the final decision is proposed to be Saturday, April 9th, which would become the 16th if we move it back a week. Do we want to do the final decision on a Saturday? There's no real reason that it would have to be on a Saturday, correct? Because it's just us meeting ourselves.
No. Yeah, that's, that can be made at any time. Sometimes boards ask, how long's that meeting take? Anywhere from 30 minutes to five and a half hours. That's been my experience on over 40, 40 searches.
Yep.
It just, just depends.
Well, and I wonder at this, at this point, if we could, I mean, we would, we could call it, certainly call a special session for that meeting. But I'm wondering at this point if we could sort of leave that open. Plan on April 12th through 14th to meet and interview the finalists. And then determine at that point, or, or before that, even after we get the initial interviews done, when we would want to meet, to have that discussion.
Perfect. We can do that.
Is there any disadvantage with there being a space between the final interview and when the board makes a decision from a candidate's perspective?
They're all anxious, of course, but no, I, I don't believe so.
Well, I wonder even on the 14th, you know, after the last interview and after the last day with the final candidate, if we could have a special session then on that Thursday? Or is that ill-advised?
Well, it depends on what our community input process is because last time we had people watch the interviews live and then comment on it, and then we had to have a little bit of time to process their input. Didn't we?
I thought that was done sort of, did we get that, I thought we got that immediately.
The same night.
Same night.
Right.
But it depends on how that feedback is, it depends on how that feedback is going to be collected during the day of the visit and the interview itself.
So I wonder at this point if we sort of leave that date open for a little while and then determine, I mean, we can determine, well, in March even.
What's on the agenda for the 19th?
Kathy, to vote or to?
To, to do the deliberation, yeah, deliberations and.
That's what I was going to say, if we just want to incorporate it into the next Tuesday's meeting.
Could do that. April 19th.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a lengthier delay for the candidates to wait for their answers.
True, and it's also, if we're concerned about religious holidays, that's, we're talking about the 19th of April.
Yeah.
That's Passover. So if we're doing it at night, should we have a Jewish candidate? They may not be available.
But the candidates probably don't need to be available. It's just us, right?
No.
Yeah.
Nope.
So we've got, for April 19th, we've got a Safe and Open Schools Plan update, Summer of Discovery Plan, Authorization of the Three-Year Technology Cycle. That's not a heavy agenda relatively.
Well, let's, let's put that in then. That minimum is a placeholder. April 19th would be the board meeting.
So instead of the 9th?
Instead of April 9th, it would be April 19th.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just to recap, because I don't know when Director Nathan walked in, we decided that the April 1st and 2nd dates were untenable because of the, the spring break.
Right. And the conference, or is that the next week? That's the next week?
And NSBA, yes.
Yeah, so the 1st and 2nd become the 8th and 9th. The 6, 7, and 8th become the 12, 13, and 14th, which is not a seven-day delay, it's a six-day delay because we're doing Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday instead of Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then the 9th becomes the 19th.
Correct.
Yep.
And that's what I've got on my notes. Is that what everybody else has as well?
And the 2nd becomes the 9th under board meeting to identify semifinalists.
Okay. The 1st and 2nd become the 8th and 9th for both items. Yep.
You know, the dates before that.
Everything before that is the same.
Everything before that, we, well, we haven't talked about anything else changing. The question is if we're gaining a week of time in that preparatory phase, are we leaving the survey open longer? Are we leaving the job posting open longer? Are we taking a little bit from each of that week to give to a little bit of each?
I would, I would recommend leaving the early part as is. The reason is it'll take Chris and I a while after the survey closes to review that and prepare the leadership profile report. And so that's a fairly, quite candidly, it's kind of an aggressive timeline there, but we should be okay. So I would suggest leaving the February dates as they are.
Uh huh. And then does that mean that we're able to utilize that extra week of time with leaving the posting open longer, the job posting open longer?
That's, that's okay. That's all right.
Because will that get us presumably more candidates the longer it's posted, or is the idea that if they haven't seen it in that period of time, they aren't going to?
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. Typically, we see a little bit of a flourish right at the start, and then all of a sudden as that, as that date approaches, when we tell them, you've got to have your application materials in, then all of a sudden our phone starts ringing and we begin to get text messages and emails saying, you know, I've been thinking about. And so it's, you know, if you were to graph it, it starts quite high, it kind of dips, and then it rallies back at the end. Are we okay with those dates?
I think that looks good. Thank you.
All right, all right. I'm conscious of our time, so I'm going to move us right along here.
Can I back? I'm sorry. So when we moved April 1st and 2nd to the 8th and the 9th, are we also moving the slate presented to the board timeframe? Because that's giving us an extra week where the people have become public, the candidates have become public, but we haven't done any interviews. Is that date moving as well?
We talked about leaving it on the 29th.
So then there's just a, an extra week in there that these names are public, but we haven't spoken to them? Is that a problem to the candidates? Okay.
No. The, the, the problem for the candidate comes in on the date their name is made public. Because they're going to want to make certain they've had a chance to speak with, if they're a sitting superintendent, with their board members, key staff members, et cetera. And dare I say, many times, kind of alerting the media to what's happening so that it doesn't spin out of control on them.
Well, and that's my exact question. If March 29th is the date that the slate is presented to us and the names become public, but we're not doing any, anything with them for an extra week, is it advantageous to delay that announcement to them?
You could, you could though, though the discussion initially was around a little extra time to do the reference phone calling.
Uh huh.
And that does provide several extra days in there to do the phone calling, even though we're not making a final decision until April 19.
I think that's really ideal for us if it doesn't harm the candidates.
To keep it on the 29th?
Uh huh.
Yes. Plus, we already have a school board meeting scheduled on April 5th. So it would be the least, just, although it is spring break week, the 29th, as long as that's okay with. And is the presentation of the slate to the board a relatively short meeting?
No. And the reason, the reason I say, I say that rather emphatically is that the presentation of the slate, in some ways, is anticlimactic. I mean, you're going to receive all of their materials, Chris and I will give an overview of each of the candidates, but the interview workshop on that evening, we will be deciding each and every question to be asked. Now, we're going to give you homework ahead of time so that we're not wordsmithing them sitting at the meeting that evening, but it takes a little while to work through just the logistics of how we're going to do those interviews, who's going to be asking which questions, what are we going to be listening for and watching for. So typically, that meeting takes 75 to 90 minutes.
So it's good to have it as a standalone meeting then?
Yes.
So is that the calendar settled?
I think so.
By the way, I will, I will be sending you, I don't know about tomorrow, but for certain, on, tomorrow is Wednesday, for certain on Thursday, a memo with everything that we discussed tonight to include the revised calendar within it. And so be looking forward to that, and if we need to make corrections, let's make certain we get those made here within the next few days so that we all have those dates penciled on our calendars.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. So who, can I ask who on the staff will be the support person to assist with scheduling the profile interviews for Chris and myself? Is there someone that we should be working with?
Yeah, that will be our Assistant Board Clerk, Michelle Severson, and I think you have her email address.
I do. We do. Okay. So we'll work with her to put together the schedule. What I'm asking you to do as board members, send to Michelle your individuals or groups that would, you would like Chris and I to visit with. Now, think of it this way, there are potentially 30 or 32 slots, two of us for two full days. We've already booked seven because we're going to want to visit with each of you individually. But beyond that then, be thinking about others you want us to visit with, and Michelle can work to combine groups. There's no problem, for example, if, you know, putting, I'm just picking two, two at random, a representative group of the Chamber of Commerce and a representative group from the ministerial and religious beliefs associations. Okay, we can, we can combine that. Typically, we find that we, we cast a wide net in terms of invitations, and then obviously there are fewer and fewer that respond, they can participate. So Wayne, want to do that? And then Jean, perhaps you or someone else could even work with Michelle to see where there could be combinations of groups and individuals for Chris and I to visit with.
Absolutely.
I'm not accustomed to giving board chairs assignments, but I think I just did, so.
Well, yeah, that, just don't make a habit of that.
We'll try not, we'll try not.
It does help if you think in terms of categories. For example, you may want to have a focus group with teachers and a focus group with, with students and a focus group with parents. Then, once you have those groups determined, then you can decide who the, who the right people are to put on those groups, making them as diverse as possible. You want to make sure you're representing all your constituencies if possible.
We maybe have a list.
I would say we have a list already.
Prepared from last time.
Yeah. I think we're going to be in good shape there because we have a preliminary list.
Perfect. You've got a running head start on that.
We absolutely do.
Board liaise on during the search. There'll be times where Chris and I need to hand off information, clarify things. Typically, it's the board chair, but it can be anyone on the board. Who would you like to designate as the board liaise on?
I'm not seeing a lot of volunteers here.
It's your, it's your preference. You'd like to make an assignment.
Oh, our, our board clerk, Don Barlow, has been nominated. And he is enthusiastically accepted. So Don Barlow, who is the elected clerk, and he's amazing, lots of experience, relatively dependable.
Okay. We should be a perfect match then, Chris and Ted and Don. We're looking forward to this, so.
Okay.
Check see mail regularly.
And Kathy, thank you for sending all the information over this past week. It's been very helpful, given us a nice running head start. Thank you.
Glad to hear it.
All right. So we've talked about the focus group identifications and the district contact person on that. Are we going to do the online survey? Chris and I want to encourage you to do that, but it's your call. Now, obviously, there's a cost associated with that.
And just review briefly, what does the online survey involve?
In terms of specifics?
Yep.
Okay, hang on just a second. Let me.
This is the one where you get the attributes of the superintendent?
And, and feedback on, and feedback on how the district is being perceived at the same time.
Okay.
It's the cover story. And witnesses, areas of need or concern, special attributes that the superintendent candidates should have.
Right. And, and the nice thing about it is it contrasts, and you can choose six different groups, but it contrasts their views to each other. So for example, in a search, a recent search I was doing, there was a big difference on perceptions between administrators, certificated staff, and parents and community members. There, I mean, there was a stark difference. So obviously, there was a communication issue, and it was a bit of an aha moment to the school district, certainly beyond, beyond just conducting the superintendent's search. So it's, but it's your call. I know you did a, a survey past time. I'll give you, I'll give you a little bit of a, for instance, and I don't recall your exact numbers, but we just finished a search for Ames, Iowa. Now Ames, Iowa, even though there's a very large university there, it's not a large community. In fact, the school district has 4,500 students, something like that. And we had over, we had over 1,100 folks respond to the survey, which included several hundred students, by the way, which was very nice to see. So we would hope that we would have a robust response from the Rochester community. A key to it is the communication from the school district to the different constituencies using all of the, all of your communication techniques that you currently use. So, you know, email blast out to parents, encouraging staff, principals encourage students if, if you choose to have students participate in the survey, et cetera.
And what's the additional cost for your firm to do that survey?
It's.
I know it's in the information you sent us. I don't have it open right now.
I want to say $2,000. Let me check real quick here.
Kathy, I don't have, I don't have that number, no. I have, I have a question about timing, but I'll let him find it first.
Okay, go ahead.
According to the search calendar, it looks like you would have it open February 1st to February 11th, the online survey.
Yeah, we might be able to move that February one day ahead.
My question for staff or anybody else, what, do we have any other outstanding surveys related to our strategic plan, any of our focus groups, or anything happening? Because we don't want there to be any confusion.
We do need to give the Minnesota Student Survey before June, which is a state enterprise, so that, that's students, but that's kind of the last biggie. We got a great response rate to the Strategic Plan Survey, which is done. And so I think the Minnesota Student Survey is the last one, which we could choose not to give, but generally speaking, we have, and the state urges us to, I would recommend that we do it, but that doesn't have adult component to it.
And it happens in school?
It happens in school, and we can be flexible. We just have to get it any time between, the window opened last week and then it closes June 1.
Okay. So no conflict, other conflicts, that's good.
Okay. So board members, what are you thinking about the online survey? I mean, one of the pluses is that it would give us information about what people are thinking, the attributes they want on a superintendent, it would also give us some information about our district at large. I don't know if we want.
I guess the question that was raised in my mind is, it seemed like there were some various costs involved here. Do we need to prioritize some of those? Do we need to hear all of our menu choices and then make the decision once we've heard each category?
Yeah. I believe the cost, I believe the cost of the survey is $2,000, and that's in two languages. Now, if you add more languages, it slows down how quickly we can get the survey up and running, and those are added, I want to say at $450 per language. The only other cost would be reimbursement for travel for either Chris or I, but more importantly, for the candidates coming into the school district, and then your advertising package. And I think that's it.
And, and when do you need to know what our decision?
importantly, for the candidates coming into the school district, and then your advertising package. And I think that's it.
And when do you need to know what our decision is, or what our decisions are in terms of those? Would it be possible for us to go back to the information that you've provided the board, for us to look at those services, at the costs, and then at an upcoming meeting, have just a quick vote on those items?
Sure. Yes. The only thing it might do would be impact when we'd have the survey up and running, but if you could let us know quickly on that, we could plan accordingly and then go from there. Same way with advertising, and by the way, Chris and I have examined this, and Package B is the best value for you in terms of what that provides of exposure or the position.
Thanks for that, and I'm working now, our next board meeting is February 8th, so that's going to allow us the schedule.
Well, I agree, let's, maybe we should run through the rest of the items, and then maybe at the end, go back and see if we're ready to make a decision about any of the additional costs.
Yeah, there was one other additional cost, I'm sorry, I failed to mention, an investigative background check, and that's $1,950. It's, it's a very robust, it's conducted by a third party, it's more than your typical background check that you would execute on, on new hires in the school district. It also includes, includes a social media review of any things that the candidate is generating on social media. We think it's an additional step of due diligence that the board can demonstrate to the community that they're taking before the employment of their next superintendent. Typically, you can choose to do it on all three finalists, typically, we do it on the finalist, and obviously, a contract offer is made contingent upon successful completion of that investigative background check. So, that is an additional cost, I'm sorry, I failed to mention that earlier.
Well, a challenge we have is we have about five minutes left. I don't know if there are other critical issues we need to discuss now, if we should take that time and just discuss, you know, sort of the add-ons that this board would support?
Why don't you discuss those, a couple of quick things, if I could, Jane? One, any restrictive qualifications you might have for Chris and I to work around in recruitment. By that, I mean, you can't require residency, but you can ensure, you can encourage it, doctorate preferred, Minnesota experience preferred, superintendent experience required, those kinds of things. And then, the other item is, at some point, well, the other item that we'd like some guidance on is internal candidates. If you should have internal candidates, we're suggesting that we give them at least a screening interview, and we would communicate with you all of your internal candidates, so you are aware of who has applied from within the school district. And that we slate internal candidates based upon how they stack up compared to the rest of the field. But you can choose to do it however you wish. Some school districts, the board wants to interview all internal candidates. There are other situations where boards have said, no, we're not interested in internal candidates, so don't even bring any forward, but that's your call.
That's a lot to discuss in five minutes.
That's a lot to discuss in five minutes. And you need that information quickly.
Well, which, which ones could be delayed?
Well, first of all, the board has agreed that we absolutely want internal candidates to apply.
Right.
We've already come to consensus about that.
I personally wouldn't want to restrict the search so much and let the good candidates rise to the top regardless if it's a doctorate or not a doctorate, or internal or not, I mean, that's, I just, I don't see the point in restricting.
Are there, are there other candidates, other candidates, board members who think that there are certain restrictions or certain qualifications that you absolutely think are critical, or are we comfortable with just putting out the...
So, sorry, I don't even know what this is.
It's a dance party. Call for candidates, Jordan's over there, shaking it up.
It's, it's not even my phone ringing, I don't know what that was. I don't remember previous superintendent searches before the last one, but I don't remember there being those kinds of restrictions on previous searches.
I think you're right.
The fewer the restrictions, the more rust, the robust the field of candidates.
All right. So, I'm not getting any pushback about additional restrictions. We do want to ensure that internal candidates absolutely are welcome to apply.
Okay.
Then, at this point, maybe we need to just, if we can just talk about the survey, the online survey. Are we ready at this point to say, absolutely, we think that's a good idea, it's worth the money, or we're not interested, or are we not ready?
Well, I think it's a good idea.
I do too.
We got a lot out of our last survey, and a lot has changed in that year.
I agree.
Okay, so...
Preferences and preferences.
Yes to the online survey.
All right, we'll get that up and running, and we'll have our office get in touch with Michelle, and then she can route that to whomever within the school district to make certain that that's linked to your website. And so, folks would simply need to click on a, on a button on your website, that will take them to the secure link to the survey. Real quickly, I'm suggesting administrators, certificated staff, such as teachers, support staff, students, parents, and community members, and folks self-identify into one of those six groups, is that okay?
I don't remember what we did last time, so...
I don't think we disaggregated it last time. I think it was, it just went out to all those groups, and then the responses to the survey just came under each question. I don't think we knew the difference between the groups.
Okay. And how many languages did we do last time?
I think it was four.
I think we did four.
But I could be making that up. I think it was four.
So, yes to the...
Yes to the survey.
Six areas, and then the inquiry regarding languages, is that something, Ted?
Yeah, he said they'd need extra time, the more languages we added.
And money.
Yeah.
And money.
Yeah. Yep.
So, when you say four in addition to English?
Well, he said two are included, and then 450 plus each additional language.
But last time, when we had four languages, was that with or without English, from what you recall?
It was, it was with English, and as I recall, and again, the response rate wasn't great, but we got, I think, three or, it was fewer than 10, maybe fewer than five, who responded in a language that wasn't English, which certainly doesn't mean that we shouldn't, we shouldn't do it, but the response rate for non-English speakers was small.
But I'm also wondering how much...
Unfortunately, that poll is what we're seeing, by the way. I just finished a search, Fairbo, which has a significant Somali population. We offered the survey in Somalia, we had one person take advantage.
Ted, is there, you know, you were talking about focus groups, in addition to the online survey, would it be possible for, for focus groups from different cultural, different cultural groups to be part of focus groups? So, maybe that's some way that we could have a more meaningful communication with, with a larger group of people.
Could we also utilize our bilingual staff and say that if you're a family whose language is not, the survey isn't translated into your language, feel free to contact our bilingual staff to assist?
That's actually a great idea. I'm working with another district right now, we're actually doing three focus groups in three different languages using district interpreters. So, that's another option that we could...
I agree, that's a good idea, and I think that we would need to advertise in other languages if that's what's happening, because if all they're seeing is advertisement in English, then they're not going to...
And I don't know if our department has that capacity on demand either, so that would be a question we would need to address.
Talk with them about that, but...
All right. So, Ted, is that something that we can do some research on and get back to you in terms of adding the additional languages? And is that something that requires a board consensus?
Yes, you could, and however, Chris's suggestion, and the suggestion, I don't know who was speaking there, of having interpreters actually meet with individuals to complete the survey, we have found that much more effective than simply offering the survey in another language.
So, yeah, so again...
It's more than just the language, it's a cultural expectation and behavior as well.
No, it's, and it's a great idea, it's just, we can't volunteer our bilingual department to do that. I hope that they have the bandwidth, but that's something we're going to absolutely have to talk with them and see if they're willing and able to do that.
The residency requirement was a question, did we discuss that? Should we discuss that?
Whether the candidates live in or around Minnesota?
Yeah.
That is a restriction question, we said we were...
No, no, it's not the residency question, whether or not we expect them to live in Rochester if they're employed here?
I thought that was part of the restrictive qualifications.
Okay, so, that was covered. And then, super, whether or not they had superintendent experience, we decided not to restrict that, and then it was... I can't remember what the other question was. So, what questions have we not addressed?
We talked about the restrictions and decided we're not placing any. We talked about the survey and decided we want to go ahead with that.
We have advertising and investigative background check.
That's what it was.
And that's the one, I'm wondering if we can wait on that one, oh, especially on the background check.
Absolutely, you, we can wait for a long time on a background check, we'd like to know soon, although, about the advertising options.
Okay. And now, we can't vote on money anyway right now, but we can come to consensus, right?
Yeah. Just, just to review, if you're, just to review, Package 1 was $2,150, Package 2, which is the one that we believe is the best value, is $3,400, and Package 3 was $6,650.
And you can see in that, in your notes what each of those involves.
Can you quantify at all the magnitude of the number of candidates you think Package 1 versus Package 2 would get us, and whether you think that's important in terms of the quality of candidates, that number?
Yep. Yeah, Package 2, the big difference being that it's highlighted. So, that means when folks go to EdWeek online and top school jobs, they're going to see that, it's bolded, it's towards the top, it doesn't get buried down with all the other jobs, that's, that's the big thing. And then, on the AASA website, it gives us 30 days, and quite candidly, because HYA is such a huge advertiser within that, we tend to get top billing for all of those. That's the big advantage to the second package.
I personally feel that if we're, you know, if we're doing this, we do it thoroughly.
So, you're thinking Package 2?
Uh huh.
I agree.
Don agrees.
It's a $1,300 difference, because we have to, we have to buy a package, right?
We would certainly hope so, otherwise, yeah, otherwise, we're kind of restricted on what we're doing for advertising.
We're going to do a search and not tell anybody.
So, it's a $1,300 difference between Package 1 and Package 3.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good story.
I hear Ms. Nathan agreeing.
I'm agreeing.
Okay, we have a consensus then, for the Package B.
Package 2.
Package 2. I get numbers and letters confused, that's why Don is going to be your contact for this, because...
Yeah, got it, Don, Don, we're looking forward to working with you.
So, again, I know this has been incredibly rushed, is there anything else that's, you know, critical that we discussed this evening?
Rushed, but very efficient, thank you. You came to the meeting so well-prepared, we can move right along.
Jane, I do have one more, I made a note about the travel expenses, and I understood from my reading material that it's helpful to know that so that that can be part of the advertising and marketing. I think we should cover that as well, that I think that that's a standard professional category.
That's a norm.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. All right, I think we're good to go, we will be in touch, I know you will be in touch, we appreciate your work, your time and your expertise. And again, Don Barlow, that's B-A-R-L-O-W, he's your guy. And Michelle Severson, she keeps all of us going, so, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Don and Michelle, and, Don, send me your cell phone number, it's going to be in speed dial, my friend.
Okay, I'll have Michelle do that.
All right, all right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Chris.
Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
All right, and thank all of you who are here and who are watching. We'll move to 3.02, School Start Time Study Results, this is another discussion item, Dr. Pecal.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. First, before I introduce them, my friends Kyla and Dave can just wave if you're hearing me, then we'll make sure, that's fantastic. So, as board members are well aware, before I got here in July, the school district had changed its start times, and this was a very, very important decision, and so, soon after arriving, we agreed that this should be a subject of some scrutiny and some feedback. When we began the process that we're going to hear the results of tonight, we did not have a Director of Research, Assessment and Evaluation, but I am proud to give the board and the community a totally impersonal brief introduction to Dr. Peter Ruck, who's in the back of the room, and I'm thrilled to say we do now have a Director of Research, Assessment and Evaluation. Name, name somewhat under scrutiny, because usually, people say research, evaluation and assessment, but that would confuse Peter with our Teachers Union, and so, we're looking for a name, but we're so excited to have Peter there, he's coming to us, and you'll meet him at the board meeting next week. So, when we started to think about, how could we take a look at the impact of the start time shifts, I immediately thought of two longtime friends and colleagues from multiple previous lives of mine. Dr. Kyla Walstrom is the former head of the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement at the University of Minnesota, also has been a practitioner, I met her when she was a principal, and so, she really has straddled that divide. Kyla really has been one of the country's leading researchers on school start times, dating back a couple decades to one of the first studies that she did here in Minnesota, which has now become a major field of study, and so, Kyla was fantastic to be willing to jump in. And then, we also engaged Dr. Dave Heistad, who's now the Executive Director of Research, Evaluation and Assessment in Bloomington Public Schools. I got to know Dave when Dave was Director in Minneapolis Public Schools. I will say, without hesitation, Dave is the Dean of School Research Professionals in Minnesota and one of the ones in the country. He regularly participates on scholarly research panels, publishes in peer-reviewed journals regularly, as, as has Kyla. So, we've kind of had a dream team here, helping us with this effort. As I turn it over to, I believe, first Kyla to give you a sense of the qualitative data, and then Dave to give you a sense of the quantitative data, I want to frame this with, with two final points. One, we included measures in this study that are actually not that important at baseline, meaning the first time we collect them, but we included them so that we can continue this analysis, and in future years, we can see, do things like the amount of sleep kids are getting, the time they wake up, their alertness in class, do they change over time? So, we're going to hear about some of that information that may not seem immediately actionable for the board, but it's going to put us in a very different place a year from now to continue to analyze the impact of this important shift. More immediately, what is the question, I believe, before the board, understanding that we're in study session? As Kyla will, I think, begin describing, and then Dave will too, there's significant agreement that the shift in school start times for our secondary schools was a positive one, and there's significant concern about our current elementary school start times. So, the question for me, for the board, is this, does the board want us to engage in a necessarily time-limited, but still thoughtful investigation of the implications of shifting our elementary school start times for next fall? The board was presented, when you were making this decision previously, with a scenario that put elementary schools at 8:00 a.m., middle schools at 9:15 a.m., and high schools at 9:15 a.m., with high schools getting out, having a longer school day and getting out at 4:12, and middle schools at 3:52. As I've talked with Scott Sheridan and Jeff Cappers and others in our operations world and transportation, this is the only viable alternative. and transportation, this is the only viable alternative we could consider on short order without massive increases in cost. Based on previous analysis, we could move to this different tiered structure at relatively neutral cost, but that would be one of the things we would have to really carefully analyze, should the Board want to do that. And so, in sum, the question before you is, do you want us for next fall to consider and seek input on a potential shift in those start times? Obviously, we need to begin that process now, were we to do it for next fall. The Board, of course, could, could choose to defer any action now for next fall. I will say that, given the boundary changes, the opening of new schools, and the closure of one school, we are going to have to redo the transportation structure next fall anyway. And therein lies the potential logic of considering this shift at this time. So, not looking for a vote, of course, in a study session, but we also don't want to conduct the analysis or engage the community in this possibility if it's not one that the Board is interested in considering. So with that, let me turn it over to Kyla, thank her again. I know we're going to show some slides and graphs, and we hope the gods of technology are with us. So, Dr. Walstrom.
Good evening, everybody. It's wonderful to be with you and to be able to share some fascinating data. As a data analyst, I've been, and a policy analyst, I've been doing this for about 27 years at the University of Minnesota. And as Dave mentioned, I mean, sorry, as Kent mentioned, I was previously an elementary teacher and a school principal and a director of special ed. I did that for almost 20 years. So I'm well acquainted with school life and teachers and opinions of teachers and parents and students and so on. So this was just a joy to be able to do this work. And I'm going to begin by sharing the qualitative data that emerged from the surveys when we asked parents to do, and all survey respondents, actually, students included, to give us some feedback, open-ended, about what they felt about the school start time. So I'm going to open this up. And, let's see if I can find my, let's see if I can find my PowerPoint. Okay, and, here we go.
It worked.
So, it worked. I mean, technology gremlins are just always standing at the, at the ready. So, here we are, here we go. Okay, so here's a quick overview, and I'm going to try to run through this. There's a lot of slides here with some quotes, but the, you'll get the gist of the overall findings. Here's a quick overview of how we conducted this survey and data analysis. So the survey questions were collaboratively created with the Rochester Leadership Team. The survey email link was sent to staff and parents in December of 2021. Also, the survey was completed by students in grades 3 through 12 during class time, designated class time that was set aside for this. And that was also done in December. And the number of items on any survey ranged from 35 questions, which were for the elementary students, to 48 questions, which is based on the parents of elementary students needing childcare, okay? So it was based on the respondent type, as how many questions they had to answer. All surveys included an open-ended feedback question, which basically said, what more would you like to tell us about the school start time change? It was totally open, and it enabled a lot of opinions, a lot of opinions to emerge. All responses were anonymous, we have no idea who, who wrote what. And then, in the analysis, the responses were grouped by school level. So we have responses by elementary, middle and high school groups, that would be parents, staff and students, and their role. Okay, so, the elementary staff comments, and Kent and I talked earlier about, this would be information that I think will be critical as you are looking at scenarios for, for any time change in the years to come. So, there were 471 elementary staff respondents, and there are 373 of those 471 people who made comments. And this is pretty remarkable, for all the years I've been doing survey work and qualitative data and analysis. Of those 373 comments, 362, or 97% of all the comments, were negative. That's a remarkable number. The positive comments in that 373, there were only three. There were mixed comments that, I'll get to in a minute, but there were only eight of them out of the 200, 373. So some main themes emerged from those 97% of the negative comments. And you can see the number one concern was loss of student learning time and behaviors. And the prime running time being lost, here's some wonderful quotes. Parents were concerned about students have to wait three hours to start their school day, we're not maximizing the best hours of the day. These are some powerful comments. The last hour of the day in an elementary classroom is a waste of an hour. I've tried to teach every subject and nothing works because they have been up since their parents had to wake them up to get to work. And another one, starting elementary students at 9:45, and this is an elementary primary teacher, 10 o'clock by the time breakfast is over for kindergarteners, is wasting prime alert academic time. My class is done and struggles to focus on academic tasks at around 2. That's nearly two hours of time that I try to teach and be engaging, but I can only do so much when the body clocks are expired. Here's some comments about extreme fatigue and inattention. Student behavior is markedly worse, it's not their fault. Biological clocks are spent by 3 o'clock. Timing in elementary schools is absolutely terrible and far from what is best for students. Students are falling asleep for majority of the afternoon and complain about sleeping, being sleepy. This is a terrible schedule for five to six-year-olds. And this is all great, this, the last 30 to 60 minutes of the day are tough for my fifth graders. It is a long day, they're at school for over nine hours. And the last comment, this is pretty important, it feels as though this schedule puts our most vulnerable learners with the least amount of learning stamina in educational situations at the least attentive part of their day. The second main theme that emerged that of great importance and negativity is, I have far less family time each day. My time with my family recharges my batteries, so to speak, and my batteries are running extremely low. The other day, my daughter asked me, why don't you play with me much anymore? The honest answer is because bell times have changed, and I'm at work longer than I was the previous school year. I feel like I'm failing as a mother. When teachers feel this way about their home life, it is a direct impact on their teaching. And another comment, my own family has seen a very negative effect. We can no longer have dinner as a family because we are home so late and need to rush to activities. It has caused us many problems. And there are concerns about people with two jobs. Most paraprofessionals have to work two jobs because of the low wages and starting later makes this very difficult. The third main theme that emerged in negative comments, concern for student safety. I have students getting off the bus between 5:00 and 5:15 at night, I feel it's too late for five to six-year-old students. Another one, students are walking home or getting off the bus when it's getting dark. I don't feel it's safe. And the last comment, and these are all sample comments, six-year-olds should not be riding a bus at 4:30 at night and getting home in the dark, please reconsider the start times. Here's the fourth main theme that emerged that was on the negative side. Elementary has no longer has time after school for IEP meetings. For bus dismissals, buses run late, IEPs do not have an administrator in attendance until 4:20 p.m. or later. IEP running meetings run until 5:30 p.m., which is absolutely ridiculous. I do not get home until 6:30 p.m. Another one I've noticed, a short amount of time for teachers and staff to collaborate, hold meetings and IEPs, and prepare for their classrooms with this time change. It's very difficult to schedule IEP meetings. After school, we're doing quick IEP meetings, IEP meetings, 15 minutes, because so many staff have to leave for daycare pickup. A sample of the one of the three positive comments is an empty nester. It doesn't impact my family life, the extra time in the morning is appreciated. Here's some sample neutral comments. There have been challenges with the buses getting to school in the afternoon. In the afternoon, we have bus duty every day until 4:15, some days have been after this time. We still have many students tardy at 9:35 time. I fully support the later start times for older students, however this has come, at the cost of well, elementary students' well-being. Here's a final summary comment I thought was important. We are providing essential foundational skills to these kids, and they're not given the proper hours during the day to learn and grow. It feels like we just didn't matter enough. I hope this is read with good intentions. This is from a staff member now. I felt as I haven't had an opportunity to voice these concerns or ask questions of someone whom I feel will give me an answer. Thank you for putting the survey out. All right, here's some staff comments from middle school survey. 132 middle school staff responded to the survey, and there were 86 middle school comments. 39% of the comments from middle school were positive, 5% were negative, 56% were neutral. This doesn't surprise me, because if people are happy with something that's happening, then they, they use this as an outlet to voice other concerns. So the fact that the neutral in other comments was the greatest amount does not, is not at all surprising. The main things out of the positive, again, students here in the secondary school of elementary, middle school are more awake and ready for learning. And you can read through these, but see, you can see, even though I prefer earlier start times, later start times are much better for middle school students, they're much more awake and alert. As a teacher, I see my students more awake and ready to go at the start time. And finally, I see a lot fewer students sleeping in class than previously. Well, the positives, increased time, these teachers have increased time for prep and meetings. Although it was apprehensive, I think the change is positive. It has been a positive for me as a teacher, I like having more planning time in the morning to get ready for the day. And then, another one says, it's been a great stress reducer. I'm just looking at the time, and I don't want to take up too much time for this. There's increased sense of personal well-being also among the middle school staff. I think there's a way to help the cost of SAC before school, I think that would be a game changer. It's currently our only issue. Other than that, my entire household loves a later start time. The negative themes that came out of the, of the 5%, because we start late, I had to give up my after-school community education job, makes me too late to get home and get dinner on the table. And another one talks about they're much having enough time to be with their young child after school before they go to bed. There are some student academic concerns that indicate negative feelings. We may have switched our start times, but extracurricular start times have not changed, nor should they. Unfortunately, I've seen more students gone from class needing to leave for these events. Also, students are not seeking help in the mornings, even with the later start time. Some, a few neutral mixed comments. They're going on to say the overall family sleep is a family issue. So these are people's opinions about the general tenor of, of life, family life. Later start times do help, as long as families adjust accordingly. I'm very neutral with start and end times, I don't see a change in students because of later start. Students are still very quiet during first hour and very tired during the last hour. Finally, when looking at start times and sleep in relation to secondary students, we need to make sure we are not catering to the abundance of students in activities. These students are still missing classes due to activities. If start times are later, they will miss more classes due to their activities. These are choices families will need to make if we, and I can't see because it's something about the academic learning, I just fell off my screen. The high school survey, 181 high school teachers and staff responded to the survey. There were 115 comments, 37% were positive, similar to middle school. Negative comments, little higher, 23%, neutral comments at about 40%. Again, we're seeing same themes, greater student alertness in the morning, greater alertness in the first hour classes. I notice far better function from seniors in the first hour. It has been a positive change for the special ed students I work with. And finally, high school students are much more alert and willing to learn in the mornings. The teachers tell us that it's improved their preparedness for teaching each day. They get to school at 6:45, the extra prep time is maybe a better teacher. I have time to reflect and make changes to lessons. This is one of the best changes in the system, and positive impacts outweigh the negative. I didn't think I would, but I appreciate the extra time in the morning, it has helped me be more prepared to start the day. And finally, I'm an early morning person and love the extra time to grade and plan before school. They also note their personal well-being benefits them, and also there's less stress. And finding that people, students and adults are kinder and even, more even-tempered, not as hairy. I still come in early and stay late, but not as late as I used to stay. My life feels more in balance. It was a great decision. I think stress is the biggest problem for staff and students, not sleep. The rhythm in our house in the morning is so much better with the start time. My kiddos get 30 to 45 minutes more sleep at night, as well, and happier and less rushed humans in the morning. We have really appreciated this change in our household. The negatives, students report they're staying up later. Now, this is, this is a bit of a red herring, perhaps, because parents and, I mean, students will tell their teachers, because there's a, there's a certain wow effect when they tell their teachers, so I was up till 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning playing video games, that kind of information can get a reaction from a teacher, but it's, we'll pin it down when we have the student results analyzed out of the student survey. But for right now, this is anecdotal, and so I think we need to be a little careful about this finding. In other words, people seeing, not seeing the benefit, kids are just staying up later, we need to find if that's actually true. Students are missing class at the end of the day due to athletics, this is what teachers are seeing, they're not just conjecturing. I have a lot more students, athletes, missing class at the end of the day. The late start affects those involved in after-school activities in a negative way, makes everyone rush more. The later dismissal affects their personal life and their second job. Same feelings, I'm less helpful as a teacher because I can't be with the students after school, because my own children get out 45 minutes before we do, and I need to get home to them. Later start times means later uptime affecting my second job. Neutral themes, there's a lack of meeting time at the end of the day, staff meetings now have a time limit. Contract ending doesn't really allow us to leave that time because of parking lot issues. I heard a lot from these, these secondary teachers about parking lot problems. So, parking congestion is worse, traffic going home is worse, makes it impossible to leave school on time if I need to. Bottlenecks in the parking lot, and overall traffic during my 10-minute drive in 20-plus minutes if I try to leave on time. There's some concern about parental oversight over students' sleep habits. Again, this is more conjecture, it's more opinion. Sleepiness and disengagement are problems. School start times may not be the main solution. Phones, technology are the biggest problem I encounter, hour to hour, day to day. I think the change is working, the teens' lack of sleep is not just a result, the school's start time, it's poor time management. Couple of ideas came through. One of them is to start, keep the start times and reduce lunchtime if the high school doesn't finish the day by 3:00 o'clock. And the last one, we need to be more creative with scheduling in the high school, perhaps more hybrid class situations, where kids attend class three times a week and do asynchronous work on other days. So there's some other suggestions that were kind of useful. Okay, I did a quick look-see at the elementary parent open-ended comments. Now, this is a Herculean task, I need to say. The number of surveys completed by elementary parents, just elementary parents, was 8, 1,874. It's a lot. There's no way that I could, without a graduate student, I could analyze all that. But I did do a random sample with bands of 500 comments out of 1,000. And the elementary parents, 70% in that sample, which is, I then did a random check to make sure it was, it was right on. 70% negative view of elementary start times, 11% of the elementary parents have a positive view of the later start times, and 11% were neutral. The main themes in the native comments, almost identical to the staff comments. Late dismissal led them to having rushed family times, reducing time for school activities and having late dinners, significant issues with their parents' work schedules, and they all said mostly, that most young children rise early and wait three hours for school to start. And I made this note, elementary parents' comments are extraordinarily similar to the comments made by elementary staff members. So, then, you have the main themes. And positive, we enjoy the later start, we can sleep in, we only have to use morning at SAC instead of both morning and afternoon. And, you can see that it has to do with people who have shift work, less rush in the morning. And the neutral ones, this is our first child, he just started kindergarten, so we know no different. And the last one, I love the later start time for my night owl child, night owl child. So, this is my quick analysis of the parent and teacher themes, and it's pretty, it's pretty strong. I mean, it's, there's clear opinions out there. So, Dave, you might, you want to tee it up?
Sure. That was excellent, Kyla. I've worked with Kyla for years on various projects in Minneapolis, and she's truly one of the best qualitative researchers that I, I know.
Thank you.
As, as Kent mentioned, we've worked together on projects at, at the state, and especially on assessment projects. My main area of expertise is in quantitative analysis, and Kent asked me to do the quantitative analysis on the student, staff and parent surveys. So I'm going to share my screen here and quickly go through the quantitative slides, which I think you have before you. If you, can you see this?
Not yet. We're seeing you.
Not yet.
Oh, you're seeing... Oh, you're seeing me, okay. So I'll try to share it again. Share, can you see it now?
No.
No.
Okay, I think the tech guys were all set up to, to show my slides if they didn't come out.
Dave, I can, I can put it up for you if you want to, you have me put it up and.
Well, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll just have, yeah, we'll just have you, you know, we'll do the, do the sharing here.
Do back and forth, I'll just say.
Yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Great.
Okay, hang on a minute, I just need to open it up. And screen share, and let's see, window, and share.
It's nice to meet board members and Chair Marvin. This is just a brief overview. I have statistics on all the items that were responded to, but this is just sampling. The first slide really parallels the findings of the qualitative analysis. Over seventy percent of parents and students in middle and high school were happy with the change in, in start times. On the other hand, less than forty percent of parents and students in elementary school were happy with the change in start times. Staff tended to be a little less pleased with the change start times at, especially in elementary, only ten percent of, of elementary staff were happy with the change. Okay, the next slide just shows you a picture of that. You can see that parents in the red were, were, tended to be very happy and, and students tended to be somewhat happy, but if you combine those two together, you get the over seventy percent of, of students and parents being, being happy. The next slide will give you just a statistical breakdown of the combination of somewhat happy and very happy, and you can see seventy-five point two percent of high school students were happy with start time changes, seventy-two percent of high school parents were happy, and sixty-three point eight percent of high school staff were happy with the changes. And this finding of such, such a strong, positive is still statistically significant with students and parents being a little bit more happy than, than staff. In the next slide, we'll show you a picture of the, all four levels, early childhood, K five, middle, and high school. Again, it shows that staff, parents, and students in high school were very happy, same thing with middle school and K five and early childhood, staff tended to be not as pleased. So this parallels the findings that Kyla has already presented. There are a few other areas that I thought I'd highlight in the quantitative analysis. In the next slide, if you can, we've got student sleepiness or factors associated with student sleepiness. And about twenty percent of the students reported difficulty sleeping, and that was across elementary, middle, and high school. Elementary students were more likely to be ready to start the day than high school students. Middle and high school students reported difficulty concentrating due to sleepiness. El- elementary students reported difficulty concentrating due to sleepiness at a much lower rate. Only fifteen percent said always or almost always had difficulty concentrating. So about two-thirds of middle school students reported difficulty going to sleep. So on the next slide, we've got a picture of the data that I just talked about, the low levels of students, but it still is twenty percent of students having difficulty sleeping. The next slide shows you the, in the past seven days, I felt ready to start the day, and elementary kids are ready and raring to go. Middle school and high school, a little bit less so. The next slide shows the bar graph for concentration in school, and very few elementary students said they had trouble concentrating, but middle and high school students reported nearly seventy percent, or sixty percent for middle school and seventy percent for high school. The next slide gives, gives a little bit more detail, and this particularly is something parents mentioned in, in the qualitative. In the past seven days, I've used electronics just before falling asleep. It's almost seventy percent of high school students, sixty-five percent of middle school students, and a little less than fifty percent for elementary students. So these kids are online right before they fall asleep to, to a large degree. We also asked questions about the alertness and participation in discussions. The early childhood students, or a hundred percent of them were alert and ready to go. The lowest was high school with sixty-seven percent. Participation in morning discussions was highest among early childhood students and lowest among high school students. Students were observed falling asleep in class, always or almost always, about six percent in early childhood, and went up to sixteen percent in middle school. So there are students falling asleep, but it's not a huge percentage. And then I think we have one more area to look at, and that's alertness. And again, you see the early childhood students reported being alert. This, this is a staff survey report, so staff reported students were alert in the morning. K five was pretty positive, middle school went down to seventy-five percent, and high school about sixty-five. And as Dr. McCall mentioned, these are going to be interesting items to look at if we do make a change in start times to see if these percentages change in a post-test survey. And then we have next, a, a picture of the discussions, morning discussions, and younger kids are almost always involved and high school students less so. So I think that gives you a picture of the quantitative data. There's all sorts of data that we can mine in the future. This is the, the graph that shows very few students actually falling asleep or being observed by staff to be falling asleep. So if board members or any members of the cabinet would like to have further analyses, once we have the data all loaded, it's very easy to, to do further analyses. So parents and guardians reported low rates of getting things done due, due to sleepiness. This is the same area that we've just talked about. Alertness is, is much higher among elementary students, but here, very few parents reported the kids are having a hard time getting things done from their observations at home. So that's very positive across the board. And in the last seven days, when my child woke up, they felt ready to start the day. So we can see that high school students to a lesser degree. So I think, I think that really wraps up the quantitative analysis, and I'd be glad to do further analyses if there are questions of interest with the board or our cabinet members.
I'll just say thank you, Dave and Kyla, so much for the work you've done. I also, before we open it up to board members, questions or, or discussion, I want to thank Brenda Witchman and Heather Nestler, who did heroic work in helping us get this survey out into the field on very short order, and Brenda for coordinating this, this whole larger effort. And with that, any questions for Kyla or Dave or board members? Again, what is most of interest to me is, is there some willingness for us to explore this possibility next fall? And if so, we could act on that. If not, we will keep these measures for use in future years.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Dr. McCall, could you go through those times again that you gave us that you went through that so fast I didn't make notes?
Yes, Chair Marvin and board members, thank you. The times, this was the bell time proposal, option C, previously. So it'd be elementary school beginning at eight AM, concluding at two-twenty, middle school beginning at nine fifteen AM, concluding at three fifty-two, and high school beginning at nine fifteen AM and concluding at four twelve. And those are the times that the consultant came up with previously, and Scott tells me that broadly stated, those would still be our most viable options, understanding that there may be some slight variation in those based upon our current route structure with the new schools and the boundary changes, but that that would be the potentially viable option for next fall.
I guess my question then would be, would you need to see additional data in order for you, I guess, as the superintendent, to feel comfortable making a change? Like you want to continue collecting to justify, or I guess that's the end of my question.
Yeah, Dr. Garcia, thank you. I think there's two things we would do if the board would like to investigate this further. One is we would do a thorough cost analysis to confirm what impact, if any, it would have, and that this is likely to work in our new structure with the boundary changes in school start times. So we would first of all do that. Second, we would actually create a, some type of a survey-based opportunity for parents, students, and staff to provide feedback on this option. Essentially, I hate it to, I love it. And so we would do that through a very brief, similar survey. And we wouldn't, because of the tight timeframes and all the moving pieces that are underway at the district, in the district right now, I would not recommend that we give multiple options. It would be this is an option compared to the current start times, would you support this? So those two things, the financial analysis, and then one more opportunity for feedback, both of which, of course, we'd share for the board, with the board before asking you to make a decision.
And I'll just, essentially to follow up on that, so the reason that I'm asking, and if board members who were here prior to me when the original vote occurred, please interject if I'm incorrect, I think for, there's nothing that was in this that was surprising to me, and I think there was the understanding of like, yes, this is going to happen. Prior to being on the board, there was already the decision of the vote made, but to extend out a couple of years, so it would be this upcoming year, I imagine, of when the current bell time schedule we had would have been put in place. And then we revoted on it to just move it up because it was coming anyway, like it was already voted on, we just moved it up a year. And my understanding of the overall issue was not so much that the people at the board table didn't understand how this would impact kids on like a biological, neurological level, but that the restriction was transportation, period. And so I feel if we can make an adjustment that is financially viable, of course, I would want our elementary school kids to be in school a little bit earlier, make sure that we have that room. So I guess I will just put out there, whatever it is that you need for us to make the right decision for our families and the students and the teachers, yes. And so if this is an option that's possible, one of my issues is like, why was it impossible before? Why wasn't it one vote on before? Maybe I'll leave that to my colleagues, and I would be happy to move forward with an option that is better for that sort of biological plus sleep hygiene, all that stuff that's affecting our kids right now.
And just to provide a little bit of background, Dr. Garcia, the last time that the board took this up, it was, it was almost two years that it was discussed at board meetings. There was a huge amount of input at board meetings from the public, you know, a number of physicians, for instance, talked about teenagers especially in sleep deprivation. So they advocated hard for a later start time for secondary students. The board then had three options that were presented and the cost, additional cost of transportation for each of those three. And at that point, the community also weighed, had the opportunity to weigh into which option they preferred, and we came up with the one that we're using this year. It was surprising, I think, to a lot of us that at that time, there wasn't a whole lot of input from elementary folks. Not blaming them, but we simply, it was so, people say the decision was made because of secondary students, and I think they're right, because we simply didn't hear much on the other side. Since we've founded this schedule, there has been a considerable amount of pushback from students and staff in the elementary level that this isn't working. It's a twenty-five minute change, but apparently that makes a big difference when you're dealing with little kids. So I, I would absolutely, at this point, agree that the board needs to reconsider the start times. And, and if that's the suggestion that we go forward with, with this option, we can certainly do that to get committee input. Maybe it's a whole new world out there now, but we had an option that was very similar to this one that was presented to the community before, and they absolutely said no, partly because, well, largely because of the difference in time between the end time for elementary and high school, and because of the late end time for high school that would preclude a number of active, after-school activities and jobs for, for our high school students.
I also recall a lot of feedback regarding like childcare, older student, you know, older students taking care of their younger siblings.
And maybe that's changed by now, but this, I mean, that was just a year ago. Ms. McLaughlin.
I actually have a comment for Dr. McCall, if it's something else we can include, and I, I don't know if it was from an email we got or some other source, but the question was kind of raised of what do the other big nine schools do in terms of the after-school activities? Is there somebody that we can look at that's similar to us, particularly with our, I don't know if we call it the tier bus, busing schedule? If there's somebody similar that is same situation, if we can get input as to how they're managing this, that might give us some direction. I worry about that later start time in that kids are missing, you know, in high school eighth hour to get to activities, would they be missing seventh and eighth hour? That's, that's a lot of their time during the day. The other feedback I would have is, it seemed, I wasn't on the board yet when the first decision was made, but it seemed like we also had the data of the number of teaching minutes in the day? Was it teaching minutes, teaching hour? I don't know what it was, but that was helpful, I think, to gauge the different options.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes, daily instructional time.
Thank you.
Yes. And at that time, this is called the bell time study, and I was curious, Dr. Walstrom or Heistat, were you guys aware of the extensive effort that had been conducted well over a two-year period through thought exchange, study sessions, the wealth of information that had been previously identified? I only inquire because I identified probably eight different study sessions, school boards or school board meetings where we convened to discuss this, a lot of time, effort, energy. And I think when all was said and done, we were provided ultimately four different options toward the end, A, B, C, and D. And even, I think, Dr. McLaughlin, well, Director McLaughlin, when he became a member of the board, you asked us to reconsider the bell time.
The timing of it, yes.
Right, right, right. And so my point then is, did we have an appetite? On, on one hand, we appealed to the community, they provided their input. We potentially anticipated that there would be a level of concern. I do recall that our elementary teachers, parents begin to, after board decided, they began to make us aware, more aware of the impact. We still obviously forge full speed ahead. We now have the reality of impact, and I think if we can find, learn from, and, and if the recommendation, if there is a recommendation that will one day be presented that gives us a cost-neutral, I, a recommendation, I would be in supportive of it as Dr. Garcia has suggested. And, and I guess I just wanted to express on one hand. And I guess I just wanted to express on one hand, having sat through hours of study and reviewing much information, to have made a decision and then to, and I'm flexible, to be asked to reconsider that decision. And I'm willing to do so if new information and a good sound rationale is presented, certainly the data. And thank you again, both you doctors, for the information you provided, and it is useful. And I'll just end with that there.
Ms. Nathan.
So I would be in favor of reexamining the bell times. I think the level, and thank you for the level of detail that came out of this survey, the effort we made to go out to the community, and then the results, I think are far clearer than the information that we received earlier when we were looking at the bell times the first time. It was really up to us to kind of discern what some of the comments were, and you know, the way thought exchange works with comments building on other comments, it really wasn't a, I guess, a level playing field for everybody's perspectives. And I think that's what was missed the first time. We clearly, it's not like teachers are suddenly realizing that the earliest times of the day are the best times for learners. They probably thought that all along, but somehow that voice was not captured adequately in the previous collection of community input. So I'm gratified to see this level of data. I would also, remembering the conversation before, just to have all the information on the table, we had some good information about the impact on what was happening after school, whether it was, you know, how it might, how many students were involved in after-school activities, the fact that the start times for activities are not ours to choose. If we were to do this, we would have to realize, we don't have control over the big nine schedules, and we would have to adjust what happens for these students rather than asking other people to adjust for us. And I think the community needs to know that in the information we present in making our decision. And then I think the other piece that I thought was interesting, when we were having this conversation before about middle and high school students, was that use of the morning. So we had had conversations about, well, now they have this morning time, and the buses, I think, right now arrive at 7:45, and their classes don't start till 8:20. I would be really interested to know, not just the school start times, but the student arrival times.
Yes.
Because I think that has a real impact on our staff right now, about students arriving a significant portion before they're actually supposed to be somewhere, and how that might impact that day. And then I thought the comment about, we're offering supports in the morning, but students aren't using them. If we were to move the start times back to 9:15, you know, we're hearing, we heard from our experts, that 8:30 was sort of that magic cutoff about when you should start school earlier than that for the middle school and high school students. So what realistically could happen before school is to offer the supports that might have previously been offered after school, even though we're trying to let them sleep later, but if the supports are needed to make sure it works. And I think the other issue, when we were talking about this before, and I don't know how it can be reflected, is getting on the bus in the dark. We heard a lot of concerns back then about earlier start times for elementary students because they didn't want them to get on the bus in the dark. Now, we have similar concerns about getting off the bus in the dark, but it would be good to know what the impact of an earlier start times for the littles on that.
Ms. Amundson.
I would agree about the dark time. I can continue to be more concerned with the morning dark time than the late dark time, just because if you're standing at a bus stop waiting, then you're stationary next to traffic, whereas when you're walking home, you're potentially not an invisible body next to the side of a road. But that's my supposition, and that's not a good way to make decisions. So one of the things that I was hoping that we could hear in the last process was actual studies or statistics on when do bus accidents happen? When do children waiting for the bus actually become impacted by, so I guess it's not bus accidents, vehicle accidents while waiting for the bus? So that would be information that would address that particular question. I also just wanted to comment on the fact that, as has been referenced here tonight, we spent a lot of time looking at it, and our staff put a lot of effort into looking at it, and what came out of that was no perfect answer. And I think that just needs to be acknowledged by us and by our community, that we are hearing the survey results loud and clear, and that I don't want people to feel like, well, we said we were mostly unhappy with this, but nobody's doing anything about it. The truth is, is that if there had been a perfect solution, we would have chosen it, and some group, unless something magical happens, some group is going to be less than happy at the, you know, when this all finishes up. I don't mind relooking at it, you know, maybe with the trying it for years, some insights have come about. But I also just think it's important to state, relooking at it doesn't necessarily mean fixing it, because there may not be a fix. The other thing is that with elementary schools starting, it's a 25, and I didn't look this up again, I'm going by memory, 25-minute difference. A 25-minute difference in start time is making this large of an impact on the experiences of the elementary staff and, to a lesser extent, the families. 25 minutes isn't that much. Another option is, could we back that up by 10 minutes? And it's a 40% change. 10 minutes out of 25 minutes is 40%. We have now maybe allayed 40% of the concerns. I mean, as crazy as that sounds, maybe what we look at for next year is just tweaking it slightly so we're not having the whiplash effect of changing people's routines yet again. It's just, it's that 25-minute number that just continues to needle me, like, how can that mess people's lives up so dramatically?
Well, and, you know, one of the things that Dr. Pecal's talked about, and Karen will get to you in a second, is looking at, ideally, if we had one tier busing, kids could get to school at the same time. But, and we could, if we could get twice as many buses and bus drivers and had an extra $6 or $8 million every year. So that's not going to happen. But he's also looking, the district is looking at efficiencies with the new boundaries and possibly new routes and other ways to save money on transportation. So maybe that the additional cost that some of these other options were going to cost might be reasonable now. Things are different than they were a year ago, so I'm going to check into that. And I don't know if it's going to mean just going back to the nine o'clock start, it'll be something totally different. But I'm hearing that board members are saying we probably should look at this again. And Ms. McLaughlin, sorry.
And I do agree that I think we should look at it again. I guess I have the perspective of not having all of that background that Dr. Director Barlow was talking about, because I wasn't on the board, I had some access to observe it, and was very interested in it, because I know that it was a very important issue for the board to look at. But I guess my concern, maybe separate a little bit from the data that we're hearing here tonight, is the community email feedback that we've received over a period of time now. What I'm sensing from some of that email feedback, both from the parents and from the staff, is that they didn't feel like they were heard in that first round of decision-making. They didn't, and I don't know what the process was, like I said, because I wasn't involved, that, you know, what, you talk about, you know, thought information, how was that conveyed to the parents and the elementary staff to provide feedback that would have informed this decision, as they're doing now? I guess is what my concern is, is that, I get the sense they don't feel like they were heard. I don't know how that feedback was solicited or included, but I think we clearly heard them now, and that is what supports taking another look at this.
Go ahead.
I do think it's critical to say that for next fall, the only viable alternative is this one, that no tweaking is possible for next fall. Now, the board could choose to make no moves for next fall, and then everything's possible. But that given financial constraints, which we're going to turn to now, and the changes in our school choice placement system that are coming with boundary changes, for next fall, this would be the only viable alternative that we would examine. And I think the one issue about, it's only 25 minutes, the critical issue is when do parents start the workday? Because in 25 minutes, it really has to do with where they are in terms of getting to work, so it's not just the amount of time, it's that issue, especially for some of our families with younger kids who are totally dependent on that. So I appreciate this. I think this has been a really robust discussion. Kyla and Dave, I want to thank you again for this, and Brenda and Heather, and others for making it happen. I think we've, I've heard a direction from the board, a willingness to do further analysis and get some further feedback on this, and that we will be doing that, and I'll work with the chair and vice chair on the timing of that, with sufficient, though the timelines will be tight, as they're going to be for all the important work of the board in the coming months, sufficient to bring this to the board to make a decision early enough to be informing, you know, families and others, but following some opportunities for input and analysis. And so we will take this feedback, and we'll bring you back our best thinking. And we invite further questions that you'd like to hear about when we bring this back to you.
Thank you.
Chair Marvin, I did have one other point. If there's any way to incorporate creative thinking about SAC in the morning, I would ask that to be considered as well, because if it's a very short term, you know, parents have to be at work at, you know, 8:00, and kids can't be dropped off until 8:15, something, you know, that if there's something we can do, like a mini SAC that you just need a few minutes, if there's a way to be creative about that.
Thank you. We'll look at that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make one more comment in general. Like, I am sorry to the staff and the parents and the students for having to go through this process and potentially changing it again, and potentially changing it again, because I don't think any of us want that to happen. And I just want to acknowledge and sort of validate how difficult this has been on that entire elementary group of folks. And I would say in terms of what, when we voted again to just move the decision up by the year that it was supposed to be anyway, I think, you know, my rationale on that too was recognizing it was already going to happen, and if we push it forward, then it's going to force us as the district to look at these other options. And unfortunately for us, COVID also happened. And so I think that, you know, that we certainly couldn't account for, and I think they got slammed kind of on both ends, right? And so they're already overworked and, you know, underpaid, et cetera, et cetera, for all of these things that were outside of their control on top of this, I think just didn't feel good. And I want to just let people know that we did hear you, and/or we are hearing you now. I'm sorry, and thank you for this feedback, and I really do appreciate those of you who did the qualitative and quantitative analysis on this, it was excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much for the work that you've done. We will move then on to 3.03, referendum planning, and I've had a request that after we hear from presenters here, then we are going to take a very brief break before we discuss the budget. So, Dr. Pecal.
Dr. Marvin, Director of the Board, I'm going to recognize our Executive Director of Finance, John Carlson, who is remote, healthy but recovering from about of a certain virus that shall go unnamed, like Voldemort. But he's got colleagues from Ellers here to give us an overview. So John, do you want to kind of tee this up? We are doing this in this order because, you know, our guests are here, which is a great place to start. This discussion obviously is connected to the subsequent discussion that we will have, and that John will give you a presentation on about the budget more broadly. But thank you for joining us.
Do they have microphones?
Oh.
We want you to speak, but not.
We need mics.
I wonder if Sid, we could.
There it is. It's magic. We were just expecting you to talk really loud.
John, you can jump in while we're bringing mics to the table here. So we'll turn it over to you, and then we can begin.
Thank you. Okay, well, good evening, and hopefully you can hear me just fine. Tonight, we have Ellers with us. Ellers is the firm that we have hired to be our municipal financial advisor. And joining you, for me, at the table there is Greg, Jody, and I think Aaron is there too. So we are having this discussion ahead of the next one on budget reductions, not because this is the solution that will solve a budget deficit for this coming school year, but I did want to honor their time and have them go first so that they could head back to the cities after this discussion. So I'm not sure who's going first, but either Greg, Jody, Aaron, fire away, and I will run the slides for you.
Great, thank you, John, and thanks for having us here again tonight. Nice to see all of you. We thought we would start out with just kind of giving you some background information on where you are in terms of school property taxes on a comparative basis, because a couple of the options, the options that we are going to talk about would allow your community to provide you with some additional support through voter-approved referendum options. So first of all, this is information based on taxes payable in '21. We know you approved your levy for taxes payable in '22, but the county will be calculating all of those taxes and rates and finalizing the statements this spring. So this is the most recent data that we have for you. This first chart shows how you compare in terms of school taxes on a residential home with an estimated market value of $200,000 with your neighboring school district. So districts in the area are the items that we, the districts that we have on this first chart. And then the next chart, you can see you're second to the lowest there, with respect to the big nine districts then, you're toward the lower end of the middle there, so you can see how you stack up in terms of school taxes, again, on a home with an estimated market value of $200,000. And then the next chart shows similar-sized districts. So here, you're at the bottom of the chart in terms of the school taxes that a homeowner with a $200,000 home would pay. And then next, I believe we have, this is now not total school taxes, this is information on a per pupil basis. So the financing tools that we're going to talk about tonight are voter-approved operating referendum, which many districts throughout the state have, very common, and you've probably seen those referendums many times. You do have operating referendum authority approved by your voters right now, and you can see that listed there. A financing tool that's become more common for school districts is a capital project levy, and that is what that orange bar represents. For most districts, they use that to cover their technology costs, and almost all of the districts with a capital project levy will even refer to it as their technology levy. They may not even know that the formal term for it is a capital project levy, but technology costs, as you know, have become a big part of districts' budget. There's not a separate financing source for that unless you have a capital project levy approved by your voters. So there are more and more districts have this in place, and you can see that the districts here have a pretty sizable amount for their students. And just a little bit of information, so again, you're probably pretty familiar with an operating referendum, but to give you a little bit more information about the capital project levy, 54 school districts have capital project levy authority in place right now, and it's a wide range in terms of the dollar amount that they access for their students. So the lowest in the state is a little over $50,000, ranging up to about $13 million, and the average for the per pupil, on a per pupil basis, is just shy of $400 per student for the districts that have capital project levy authorities in place. And the reason that districts have been going to their voters to request additional support, either through operating referendum, capital project levy, or both, as you've seen on the chart that we showed you with similar-sized districts, is because the general education formula allowance hasn't kept pace with inflation. And I'm sure John has talked to you about this in the past, but you'll see that the gap between the allowance that is in place now and the formula that's been approved by MDE is almost $600 per student. So in order to keep up with that, or in order to close that gap, I think if you go to the next chart, then, the next slide, John, in order to close that gap, districts have had to ask their voters for additional authority for funding for their operating budget through either a capital project levy or operating referendum. And just to point out that in addition to the general education revenue not keeping pace with inflation, a lot of the other funding formulas, like special education, haven't kept pace with inflation. And the only way to then bridge that gap are to cut the budget or to ask the voters for additional support, and most districts have done both. And I think you're kind of exploring all your options, including both of those. think you're kind of exploring all your options, including both of those scenarios also. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron. No, I'm going to turn it over to Greg, I think he's going to do the next section.
Everybody's very forgetful. Nice to be here tonight, and we wanted to dig a little bit into the differences between those two types of methods for raising voter-approved revenue, just so you have a, kind of as you're thinking about options going forward, you have a sense for what the implications of those two are. Primarily, we're going to talk a little bit about tax base. So, the two levies are actually assessed on different tax bases, and that makes a, makes a bit of a difference for you in Rochester school districts. So, the referendum market value tax base is described on this slide. Basically, referendum market value takes the value that someone thinks their property is worth, like a $200,000 home, and a business of $200,000. Those two types of properties will pay the exact same amount of property taxes on a referendum market value tax. Ag land, which you have a little bit of, and seasonal recreational property do not pay any taxes on referendum market value taxes. So, districts with large amounts of those properties see significant shifts if, depending on the tax base that they're using. In addition, if you, when we think about net tax capacity, which is what most of your property tax levies are levied against, there's this classification rate system. And while you probably don't delve into the details of that a lot, the general result of net tax capacity levies is that it tends to shift property taxes away from homeowners into commercial industrial property through the use of classification rates. So, a $500,000 home has a lower classification rate than a $500,000 business. So, a $500,000 business will end up paying more than a $500,000 home in taxes. And those are, differences are exaggerated at the lower end of the property tax base in the $200,000 or $100,000 home range. And so, an operating referendum levied on referendum market value will tend to have a higher impact on a homeowner than on a business. And the opposite is true for a capital project levy. So, let's look at your tax base in particular, and that's on the next slide. And as I mentioned, you have a little bit of agricultural property, and you see that in the, in the far-left column, which is the market value column, which is, like I said, kind of the layman's view of what's my house worth and what's my business worth from a property tax basis. So, you've got about 2.9% of your property is in ag, but really, the bulk of it is in residential properties, either homestead or non-homestead, which represents about 75% of your tax base. Commercial industrial properties represent about 20% of your tax base. And you can see that carries into the middle column basically, straight over, because so little of your tax base is agricultural and seasonal rec. So, the middle column is referendum market value, and when you do one of those per pupil operating referendums, that's the tax base it gets levied against. Net tax capacity on the far-right then is the tax base that most of your other levies get levied against, including your bonds and kind of every, most of what's on that sheet. But for this discussion, it's important to note that this is the tax base that a capital project levy would get levied against. And you can see that the shift that happens, because on net tax capacity, the value of commercial and industrial property, or the proportion of commercial industrial property as the component of the tax base, almost doubles. So, it goes from about 21% to 35% or so. And so what that means is that when you do a net tax capacity levy, the commercial industrial sector picks up more of that property tax burden in proportion than do residential homeowners. And as you're thinking about asking people to support an additional levy, that can come into play as you talk about the tax impact to those homeowners as they're thinking about voting. And so we did a little side-by-side analysis, which is on the next slide, that compares if you wanted to raise $9 million on an operating referendum, which would be on a per pupil basis, versus a capital project levy, that same $9 million, what would it cost various types and values of properties? So, you can see in the first column, on a $200,000 capital project levy, that homeowner would raise, or would pay about $80 a year if that capital project levy was passed. To generate the same $9 million on an operating referendum on a per pupil basis, that taxpayer would pay $104 annually. So, about a 25% increase in tax impact just from choosing one method to raise funds versus the other. So, for the school district, it's the same $9 million, but for the property taxpayer, the homeowners will pay proportionately less on a capital project levy. And Jody mentioned that those are technically, usually referred to as technology levies, because most districts use them for technology expenses. What we've seen is, you know, and you might think, while we're paying all of our technology expenses, how would this help us? But you do, you would have the ability then to free up funds that are currently used in your general fund for technology purposes, and allocate them to more general uses. So, it's shifting what you're spending the money on, but ultimately getting you the same result, which is $9 million extra in your general fund, in this example, or whatever that dollar amount is. The other piece of it that we did want to mention is that because, because you leverage the ability to issue bonds to finance some of your long-term facilities maintenance program, you have the ability, ability to also adjust your annual levy for facilities maintenance programs. Those are both levies that are made on the debt service, and the pay-as-you-go levy are made against net tax capacity. And some districts that, the largest 25 districts in Minnesota have the ability to do this kind of leveraging, and some of those districts have taken advantage of that ability as they've asked their voters for additional operating funds through a capital project levy by reducing their pay-as-you-go facilities maintenance levy, and then issuing slightly more on the bond side, so that all the projects continue to be done, but they can mitigate some of the tax impact of asking for additional operating funds by reducing the pay-as-you-go levy for facilities maintenance. And if you remember some of that, and we can get into the charts and graphs of that, but during the discussion with the, during the bond referendum, we built in some of that by issuing slightly more facilities maintenance bonds and building step downs, you remember, in that, in that kind of long-term plan for debt service levies. And so we'd be doing the same thing, and you have a significant number of step downs in tax rates for future capital levies that, you know, we're planning to use as your capital needs grow, but could also be incorporated in planning for a capital project levy as well. So, just another tool that thankfully you have the opportunity to take advantage of because of your size, that the legislature's granted you. But another important distinction as you think about which levers you pull to try and help with your, with your general fund. And.
And maybe we just want to mention, John, I think the $9 million was the magic number just because that was about what you were thinking you were spending on technology is the reason that we picked that number, correct?
I gave you a number, and I don't remember if it was nine or 13, or, but it was, it's somewhere in there.
Okay, sounds good.
But we can run any number you're interested in, and show you that impact, and it's really proportional. If those numbers are double, the difference would be double. So, we also wanted to give you a little bit of just general background about the process for going ahead with one of these levies, and I'm going to ask Aaron to take over, and I know, Jody and I have been here a lot, and you're sick of seeing us, but I know one or two of you met Aaron at the MSBA conference last week, but just so you all know, Aaron joined us right after Labor Day. He was most, most immediately previously the Director of Business Services for the South St. Paul School District, but also held the same position at South Washington County Schools, kind of the equivalent position to what John holds for you. So, really, we're very excited to have him on our team, and he's, you know, already bringing a lot of great value to our, to our friends out in the school district. So, so Aaron will be working with Jody and I on, on everything Rochester, so. Go ahead, Aaron.
Thanks, Greg. As Greg mentioned, kind of the tax factors around the operating referendum and capital projects levy. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the logistics and some specifics, and you'll see some similarities between them, but you also see a couple of differences as well. So, the operating referendum, so there is a state cap in place, and you can see that's listed there at $1,876 per student. The revenue for some districts can be a mix of state aid and local tax, property tax. Rochester has enough property tax base where it's all generated through local property taxes. Some districts, the state will kick in some equalization aid to help them out with that. But for Rochester, it is primarily, or I'm sorry, it's all property tax levy. The operating referendum does have a maximum length of 10 years, you can see that in the lower gray box. As Greg and Jody mentioned, the taxes are spread on the referendum market value, and then the revenue can be used for any operating or capital expenditure that you might have. The next slide, a couple more facts regarding the operating referendum. So, you can only have a vote on the November general election, you can see that listed there. The election can be held either one or two years prior to the initial tax year. So, for example, if there was an election in November of 2022, the first year that would be revenue for the school district would be the 2023-24 school year. And then there are also some requirements related to the operating referendum, one of which includes required communication to your community regarding the referendum and estimated tax impacts with that referendum. So, some more specifics about Rochester. You currently have one operating referendum in place that was approved by your voters in November of 2015, and that is for the 10 years that is allowed by law. It does include an annual inflationary adjustment, which is becoming increasingly common for Minnesota school districts, so your operating referendum does increase by inflation every year. I will mention, inflation isn't just a number that somebody makes up, right? It isn't, it is statutory, and it's based on the Consumer Price Index. And so, that information is generated and communicated by the Department of Education every year. So, that's, that's the inflation that is, is used on an annual basis. So, there's a couple of options related to the Rochester operating referendum. So, it does expire after the 2025-26 school year. So, you can have a renewal election, either as I mentioned, a year or two years before, or there is an opportunity to have an election in 2023, what's known as revoke and replace, so you can address that expired referendum that way as well. So, the current estimate for 2024-25 school year is $863 per people, and again, that's based on estimated inflation from the state. And then the current estimate of the cap is projected to be just over $2,000 for that same year. So, that's the operating referendum. The next slide addresses the capital projects levy. So, your capital project levy is based on a stated tax rate. So, I think it's important to note the difference between an operating referendum and capital projects levy. So, operating referendum, you're generating that money based on the number of students that you serve. So, if there's an increase in enrollment, your operating referendum increases, and vice versa. For a capital projects levy, it's based on your property tax base. So, if your property tax base increases, your capital projects levy is going to increase and vice versa. So, two funding formulas that are based on completely different factors when it comes to that. As Jody mentioned, districts are allowed to use this money for technology and other capital projects. Primarily, we see that districts are using that for technology needs. The similarity is the capital projects levy also has a maximum length of 10 years, like the operating referendum. And as Greg mentioned, the taxes are spread on the net tax capacity. And then, this is just another slide that's kind of noting the differences. I'll highlight a couple of things here. The third bullet, you can see there's no maximum amount. So, the operating referendum, as I mentioned, does have a cap. The capital projects levy does not have a cap. And then finally, that last bullet, you can see, as a reminder, the operating referendum, you can only go in November. However, capital projects levy, you are allowed to go in February, April, May, August, or November. So, there's more flexibility when it comes to the election dates for a capital project. So, that concludes our presentation. We're more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Ms. Amundson.
That was like drinking from a fire hose, so I'm still processing up here, but I did write down one question as you were going. The revoke and replace for our current operating referendum, you mentioned 2023, is that the earliest we're allowed to do a revoke and replace?
No, you could do a revoke and replace at any time. You can only ask for a renewal either one or two years in advance. So, you could, you could have a November '22 election with revoke and replace.
Now I understand. Now I see where my brain got, because I was just wondering, the third bullet points at election in 2023 could revoke and replace current authority.
Yeah, and our understanding was that you were kind of targeting the 2023 year as a year that you might ask the voters for some additional support.
So, revoke and replace could happen anytime, and renewal the soonest is 2023.
You know, as always, you do such a good job. Thank you. I mean, this.
I have a question.
Oh, it's Ms. Nathan.
And I'm not sure it's for all of you, but thank you, but it might be. John, when I look at the budget and our general fund revenue by source, our property taxes represent 18.5% of our revenues. So, as I understand what we're looking at here, we're looking at that piece of the pie, and perhaps raising the revenue, increasing the size of that pie, but also raising the revenue possibly through two different referendums types.
That's right. It would be relying more on local sources or property tax revenue, and there's two different ways we could get there, or both.
And in your experience, you know, if we were to continue on our path of an operating referendum and go to the community like we have in the past, have you seen the operating referendum and the capital referendum happen in the same election?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Have you ever seen a capital referendum happen at one time of the year, and an operating referendum happen later in that same year? Not saying it's a good idea, just looking at options.
Yep. I don't know that we've seen it happen in the same calendar year, but certainly, probably not, not too far apart. You know, you've got a time in the operating referendum in November, so that's, you don't have as much flexibility with that.
Okay.
So, you mean like if we go in May for the capital levy and then November for?
Right. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Amundson.
I remember from many years past, because I've been involved with referendum efforts at AsA Citizen many, many times. I remember a chart being presented that talks about success rates, and if it's a on-year, off-year election. Do you have numbers that support whether or not a capital project levy referendum would be subject to the same basic percentages of success, depending on the year? Or just, regardless of the year, how communities tend to support one over the other in terms of success rates?
Yeah, I don't think we've seen the data. We definitely have the data supporting the operating referendum and the higher success rates in the odd years, of course.
Yep.
I don't think we've seen that data on capital project levy. I do think we've heard just anecdotally feedback that the capital project levy is easy for the, easier for the voters to understand, because especially when you're calling it your technology levy, and everybody knows that, that technology costs are really important and have increased as part of the school district budget. And I would say that in the ballot question for an operating referendum, it's very prescribed language, it doesn't give you a lot of flexibility with explaining what you're using the dollars for. However, the capital project levy, you can explain exactly the types of tech, technology costs or other capital projects that you'd be financing. or other capital projects that you'd be financing. So I think voters seem to like that, a little bit more detail, I think, in that question because they understand what the money's going for. Where the general education, you know, the, the operating referendum, I think, you really have to work hard to educate people who haven't, who, work hard to educate people ahead of time. And if they haven't been educated ahead of time, it's hard for them to understand where their money's going if they are just seeing that language for the first time when they get to the, to the ballot.
Yeah, and I think the data set on just the number of elections is so much smaller for capital project levies. You know, there are 300-plus districts that have operating referendums and have held elections pretty frequently over time. They're, right now, there are only 50 districts with capital project levies and really that number has probably doubled in the last five or six years. So they just weren't as frequently used. So it's harder to get a, harder to get a trend when there, there just aren't that many elections, so.
Ms. Nathan.
So one of the things, when you were talking about prescriptions in the ballot language, that the revenue has to be used for items consistent with the ballot, ballot language. How, given how technology changes and evolves, how, and how long of a period of time are these capital levies usually for?
Well, up to 10 years.
Okay. So 10 years is a long time in technology life. How, how does the language limit us in, in what we can spend it on?
So I think most of the language you've seen has given enough flexibility, but also enough specificity for, for the district.
Typically, we talk about systems and salaries because you're allowed to pay salary costs for technology support staff versus naming certain technologies. So just to give you kind of ongoing flexibility as your, yeah, as technology changes.
Good. Ms. Amundson.
So my favorite slide ongoing is the one where the two lines get a bigger and bigger gap because of inflation. Now, tell me if I'm doing my math right. If I take the 74-61 minus the 68-63, which is the current gap for this year, I would multiply that dollar amount by our number of students, correct? To, to say, so it's accurate if I did my math correctly to say that if the funding formula had kept up with inflation, we would have $10 million per year more right now in our budget than we do. So when our population asks us, why are you guys in this hole right now? Why are you, you know, facing this? I could say if the legislators had kept up with inflation, we wouldn't, we would be $10 million less bad than we are now.
Yeah, and I think the other component that we frequently see districts mention is the special education cost subsidy. So that's usually a pretty big number for each district. So in addition to the general education formula allowance, that's why we mentioned some of the other funding formulas that either haven't, either haven't kept pace with inflation or aren't covering the costs that you...
And that cost subsidy is not covered in that gap on the chart. So that's the additional explanation for why we haven't been able to do what we were doing 20 years ago.
Yeah, I think those two are the, the most significant, yes.
Well, and it's the compounding effect as well. Because, and it, and it's hard to communicate people that see that, well, you got 2% and that's what inflation was last year. But when you start off, you know, 6% or 8% behind and the, the gap in that chart is what, I mean, if you, if you never, if you didn't pay attention to your budget every year, that's how far you'd be behind. I mean, that, that's a cumulative deficit that in funding that, you know, has, you know, developed over decades.
Right. So it's 10 million this year, but it was maybe nine and a half last year and that makes 19 and a half. And if it was nine the year before, then it's 20, yeah, okay.
And...
There's, there's a lot of kind of good information in that chart that, that can help you explain to people why 2% isn't enough. And, and now that, you know, inflation is more than 2%, it's, it's going to be even more of a struggle for school districts.
John, I'm going to put you on the spot here and you may not know this, but do you have a ballpark idea right now what our cross-country, cross-country, our cross-subsidy deficit is?
I'm going to say roughly in the $15 million range.
$15 million, more or less. So that's a chunk. It's money that we absolutely are obligated to spend, that we need to spend, but that we don't get reimbursed for. I'm just agreeing with myself here.
Yeah.
Okay.
You are correct.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you.
So before we finish the conversation, I maybe Superintendent Pikel or, or Mr. Carlson, I understand we're being presented this information so that when we do have a conversation about the referendum as a strategy, we have a better understanding about an additional tool that might be in our toolbox.
That's right. I wanted to give you the information so you kind of know in the back of your mind. The timing is particularly important. So what budget year drives what year you have to have the election. And then giving you one other option, the technology piece that we haven't really talked about before. And by the way, I did give Jody the $9 million number because I said we had spent $36 million on technology over the last four years. So I just divided by four and so it's about a $9 million average.
Thank you. Are you good?
Yeah, I would say to Director Nathan, your, your point, while the points about the lack of reliable inflationary increase in the general fund and the cross-subsidy are unquestionably true, they're also knowns and it's incumbent upon us to manage for them. So it's very important for us to be aware of that and articulate that to the voters. I think it's a sign of an unhealthy policy environment, which is not local, it's state, that Minnesota really has come to rely on these referenda to cover those structural problems, which is not, I think, how any of us would suggest a high-performing state would do it. So it's very relevant to point those points out and we need to message that very effectively to the voters. Unfortunately, this is one of the ways Minnesota has come to rely on somewhat lessening the pain of that, that reality. So yes, to Director Nathan's point, that's why we wanted to have this discussion concurrent with the other discussions because this is a really indispensable tool for school districts in addressing those realities. Even as we advocate at the state level for better structures and policy, this is a, a tool that we really need the citizens of Rochester to give this district to address those concerns, but we have to make that case.
Yeah, and I just think it's important that our public knows that it wasn't financial mismanagement that got us to this point. That's, I, I don't think we can say that often enough.
Yeah.
Or loudly enough, or clearly enough, or simply enough.
Mr. Browell.
So then, at this point in time, how many districts would you say ours is either directly working with or you're aware of who are, what percentage of districts are actually utilizing these tools?
So operating referendums are about 90%, right, of the districts? And then 54 of the 333 have capital project levies in place, so.
Yeah, I would, I would say to a certain degree, 100% of the districts we work with are talking about these and whether they can get them passed or not is part of the question too. Thank you. We routinely get calls about what are, what are our options and your options are limited and...
This is very, very informative and we appreciate that. Dr. Pikel, anything else?
No, thank you for making the trip. It's been invaluable.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. We'll be talking.
Yes, sure, yeah. Just let us know what else can be, if John knows where to find us. So whatever else would be helpful to you guys as you go through your decision-making process, we'll be happy to provide.
Right. Thank you and drive safely. It is 6:44 and we will take about a nine-minute break. We are in recess for 10 minutes.
Okay.
And we are reconvened. We are now at agenda items 3.04 Budget Deficit Reduction Plan. Dr. Kev.
Dr. Marvin, Director of the Board. I'm going to turn it over to John Carlson, who as you all know is our Executive Director of Finance in a moment. Let me just take one moment to frame what we are asking of you tonight. In our previous study session, we presented for you a larger, let's call it a package of adjustments, uses of revenue streams, some accounting shifts, that cumulatively add up to a three-year plan, which would include a referendum, as we just discussed, to put the district on a path to fiscal balance. Year one of that plan would be the 22-23 school year, or FY23, as we call it. And the board gave us invaluable feedback on the large, big picture of that plan. And John is briefly going to review it for you here at the start of his presentation. But the remaining question for us to develop a budget proposal for you to consider on February 8th is what size reductions should be included in that plan? And so that's the question before you tonight. Last meeting, we presented you with four scenarios for reductions. And you asked us to look at what we, in the previous framework called options B and C, which tonight we've renamed one and two, so we don't have to keep going back to B and C. But the purpose, I think, of the board's request was, you can't give us direction on the level of reductions to make without knowing what those reductions might entail. And so we've prepared here actually three different buckets of potential reductions for FY23. The first of which is less intensive and corresponds with the lowest range that you asked us to look at. The second of which is actually in the second highest, but not the highest range to look at. And then we also have a third category of some additional reductions that you could ask us to consider in place of or in addition to the ones that we're recommending. So we're not asking tonight for a vote on any specific reduction. We're asking for your direction on the level of reduction you would like to include in the overall plan. We will be seeking input from key stakeholder groups on these reductions next week. And then at the February 8th board meeting, we would be bringing you not only a fine-tuned list of these reductions, but also a larger plan for your consideration. So with that as background, let me turn it over to John and ask him to walk you through the specifics. This information and the impact statements for each of these possible reductions were included in a memo that board members received this afternoon and that is also available on our School District Board Doc site. So John.
Yeah, thank you very much. Hopefully you can still hear me just fine. So I'm going to walk you through this plan that we've got here tonight. Hopefully the computer will actually change the screen. All right. So just a quick summary of where we're at on January 11th of the last study session. We're planning for up to a $23 million deficit. It's up to because we are still negotiating one of our largest employment contracts. And so depending on where we land there, it might be less than 23 million. It might be more if we land even higher, but we're planning right now for up to 23 million. Board consensus, as Superintendent said, was to look at options B and C that we talked about on January 11th. All three of those options had three things in similar, in that they did count on using federal COVID funding, delay transfers of funds internally, so kind of the mechanics of moving funds around to different obligations that we have to make internally and kind of just slowing that down to save a little bit of money.
Oh, sad day.
I don't know. We lost you for a minute. You're back.
Oh, no. Okay.
You're back. Back up like 10 seconds.
Okay. So I was saying that use federal COVID funding, 9.3 million, delay transfers of funds internally, and then canceling three facility leases. So those were in all three of the plans, or four of the plans. And then using our savings account somewhere between 4.3 million and 6.5 million, that was kind of the difference between options B and C. And then reducing spending by the amount we don't use of our savings account, either 4.8 or $7 million. Again, I just want to highlight these three things that we said we are pretty certain we are moving forward with, unless we were to hear some strong objection not to, but it's our strong recommendation to do these three things. The OPEB transfer, which is our other post-employment benefits, we would just not transfer money to that savings account for a year. Delay the GAZB-16 transfer. Again, we would not make a transfer into savings account to fund that. Neither of these are going to materially affect the long-term status of either of those obligations. And then we have in the plans to cancel three facility leases since we have more space in our own buildings coming up this fall. We are going to sunset the lease at Gage East for girls gymnastics and move that to Friddell. We are going to sunset the lease at Boys and Girls Club for the middle school right fit program. That would also move to Friddell. And then we would cancel the lease at 415 South Broadway for incubator EDU. And we're going to talk about that in a moment, but that program would also be sunset. So option one, the $4.8 million number. Generally, we were able to come up with a list of either assumptions that we could change or reductions in positions that are in the forecast that might not be needed. It also includes some positions that are currently budgeted but are vacant, which we could possibly remove from next year's budget. These reductions in this first list that we're going to go over generally have a minimal direct impact on students. And that's really what we were targeting, is what can we do to make sure that we have the least impact to students as possible? In Board Docs, we have a lot more detail surrounding each of these items. I'm going to go through them at a higher level. And, you know, we could talk about these as we go, or we could circle back to them. I'm open to either way. But the first item on the list was move money back from the workers' comp fund, so there's no more than a 25% fund balance in the work comp fund remaining. And basically, this is a transaction we've done before, has no material impact really on our work comp fund. It's well-funded. We have enough money in there to cover claims as they come forward. This would just put money back into the general fund and make it available for education purposes. Item 1B on our list was adjust our budgeting methodology and only allocate five extra general education teachers instead of 10. Up to the start of this year, we had been doing five, and then we decided to put 10 in there for this year. We're just proposing going backwards to five again, and the forecast would have assumed 10. So it would just kind of put us back to where we had traditionally budgeted for. And these are teachers that the needs come up in the summer. Say you have 40 kids in kindergarten at a particular school and 10 more kids register over the summer, we go and post another position for a kindergarten teacher because we can't have classes that large. So these are directly related to enrollment changes that happen in the summer after the board approves the school budget. One C is adjust our budgeting methodology to reflect approximate number of unfilled positions. And so basically what I did is I've looked back over the last 10 years. And about the last four years, our trend has been to have a significant number of positions unfilled. It's not, again, because we are telling people not to fill positions, but it's been a hard labor market to fill all of the open positions. As of this year, we take a snapshot on the first of every month in our department. And we have had 168.8 full-time equivalent jobs open on average on every first of the month as we've looked. And so what this is just saying is assume 20% of those jobs are going to, you know, about 30 positions or 34 positions at any one time are going to be open. Not, again, because we're saying don't fill them, but just someone resigns and then it's open for four weeks. And another person resigns and it's open for another four weeks. Or we post a new position and nobody fills it for two months. It would reflect a lower number in our forecast then and serves really to reduce what our expected projected budget would be. It also probably will help us come in a little bit more accurate at the end of the year. As we have noticed, we come to the end of the year and we have underspent the budget. And part of that is because when positions are asked for and once they are approved, they go into the budget as if they're going to be filled for a whole year with benefits because they are approved in the budget. And so then we come in under budget and people ask why are we under budget? Well, it's because we had positions out there that were open and vacant for quite some time. One D is when we start getting into a little bit more real budget reductions. This one is reduce central office contracted services and supply budgets. We have noticed that not all of our budgets get fully spent in a year. They're on the books, but they're not fully spent. And so we're proposing a 5% reduction to our central office budgets. One E is reduce site contracted services and supply budgets. Same thing. We're noticing in our school buildings, some buildings use every dollar of their site supply budget, although that's not usually the case. Most of the time, there's money left over at the end of the year, and then we allow principals to carry forward any unspent funds from the previous year. So this would just be saying, let's take a 5% reduction to the site supply budgets that generally aren't getting spent in full every year. One F is elimination of an unfilled central office administrative clerical position. So right now, there is a position that we are holding open and empty. It's in the budget, but nobody is in it. This would basically be removing it from the position control and capturing those savings. One G, reduce unfilled positions in construction in COVID-19 response. Again, we've had four vacant positions there all year. And we are saying if we take those out of the budget, it also captures additional savings that are in the projected budget. One H, reduce building administrators based on enrollment or enrollment shifts. We know that we're going to need to look at our number of principals that we have staffing our school buildings and assistant principals. This would be applying a ratio and looking really at the actual numbers for next year as we get that data. It's in preliminary form right now, but we're noticing that if we applied a ratio to that, we could probably cut out a few of the positions that we had been planning for next year. One I, reduce unfilled positions in special education. Again, these would be jobs that have been vacant this year. This is not an impact on a current employee, nor would it, should affect any current student. One J, this goes back to my comments earlier about the lease at 415 South Broadway. Eliminate the incubator EDU program. This one probably deserves some additional conversation, but it has been a low-demand program. We've had difficulty in staffing the program, and we are leasing extra space for it. And so those three factors put together caused this program elimination to rise to this list. And then 1K, reduce instructional coaches. Through some thoughtful conversation, there was some planning and some discussion about not eliminating instructional coaches altogether from our staffing patterns, but reducing the amount by the equivalent of four full-time equivalent positions. And that's the end of option one items. Would there be any clarification needed or any questions on any of the items in option one, the 4.8?
John, I might actually suggest, although if board members feel differently, of course, they can jump that. I might suggest we actually go through your whole presentation and the logic of that being the stacking of these reductions is very much intentional. And so I think that as board members see what's in the next category and then what's in the final category that we're not recommending, then it would be a good chance to come back to specific items once board members have the big picture. There are some much more systemic reductions in the out years that are not before you, but I think it'd be good to briefly touch base on those before we come back to these very important individual items.
The option two items total about $2.2 million. They stack on top of the 4.8. They get us to that $7 million target of what was option C last study session. Generally, this is a list now that is going to reflect deeper and more systemic reductions. Some of these will impact current staff and they will affect some of our student experiences. So 2A, this one does kind of fit into the option one. It's just mathematically, we had hit the $4.8 million. But reduce vacant special ed para positions. And again, these were positions that were identified as student services looked at their positions. And primarily, these are going to be unfilled positions right now, so they should not be affecting a current staff or student. 2B is kind of similar to the budgeting logic. We are assuming growth next year because we're assuming for growth in students. But this one says, don't assume any growth in future special ed para positions. And just kind of take a more systemic look at the process around writing IEPs and placing special ed paras. And so rather than assume that there'd be 7.7 FTE additional next year just because of growth of our district, we would not reflect that as a change in the budget for next year when we actually get to budgeting. 2C is reduce tuition contracts at a community nursery school. We are reserving 34 spots for special education preschoolers used to integrate them with general education peers. This would be reducing those number of slots back to 26 instead of 34. 2D is reduce a central office curriculum position. So in this option, the Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction will reorganize and reduce a position in the central office. 2E would be noticed in our high school. It's reduce a clerical position from seven to six. So there'd be six clerical staff at each of our three comprehensive high schools instead of seven. 2F, reduce and reorganize central office curriculum and instruction administrator positions. So again, the Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction would put together a plan to reduce a position, a leadership position in curriculum and instruction. 2G, reduce and reorganize central office student services positions. Again, this would task our Executive Director of Student Services to reduce some positions within that department. Reduce and reorganize student services administrator positions. This is number 2H, but our Executive Director of Student Services would need to put together a plan to reduce a position of leadership in that area, and that would not be at the central office. That would be elsewhere. 2I is reduce central office support positions. I believe these are still under discussion as to what positions those would exactly be, but we're accounting for one and a half FTE of central office supporting positions, not leadership, but support. 2J would be felt at the middle schools, just like at the high schools. We would reduce one clerical position in each office and bring it down from three to two. 2K is eliminate the inside-out payment. This is a payment that is made to a foundation and it provides support to Lincoln K8, Riverside, Hoover, John Adams, Friddell, and Gage. And then 2L would be just tightening up our elementary education, or yes, our elementary education paraprofessional formula. And so that number probably means nothing to you. It doesn't need to. It's adjusting a factor there that would give slightly less staffing to our school principals for paraprofessional. It's just a, it's adjusting a factor there that would give slightly less staffing to our school principals for paraprofessional staff. And then for two additional options that we are not recommending this year, but if something were removed out of option one or two, if we had significant discussions said, you know, we really just don't like one J or whatever, just take one J off the list, I don't even remember what that is. But if we did that, then we would come down to the next couple of items here and say, we probably then need to tighten the formula for how we staff our elementary school teachers. And then our next choice would be tighten the formula for high school teachers. And we may do that in either order. I think we would need to talk about which exact order we would do that. But those would be two additional options. And then we also put together one more list, a kind of a fourth bucket. These are issues that we think that we need to study for the next round of budget reductions. So this would be for the 23, 24 school year. We would need to start looking at these early in the upcoming school year of 22, 23, before we would feel comfortable bringing them back for a recommendation to you in the next one. But we wanted to just say, these are items that we're talking about, that we've put out there, but we've set aside. We're not considering them for this upcoming school year. Some of these items are change set points for heating and cooling. We could manipulate the temperature by a degree either way to save money. We could close a small elementary school and consolidate with another school. We could eliminate some athletic sports. We could further reduce or eliminate instructional coaching. We could further reduce administrative positions, and these would be like leadership positions. We could reduce elementary reading teachers. We could reduce health office nurses. We could reduce cleaning staff for our buildings. We could reduce or eliminate transportation for district-wide option schools. We could reduce out of classroom student supports like social workers, school counselors, student resiliency specialists, security paraprofessionals, and equity specialists. We could reduce some high school electives or classes at the high schools. We could reduce the number of electronic devices and the corresponding software licenses. And we could tighten the formula for middle school teachers. We did not put these in any order of consideration on this list. Again, these were just items that the budget advisory group had talked about. They're on a list and then we removed them and said they're not under consideration for 22, 23. And I think that's the end of my presentation here.
John, quick, just a quick question. Are these in any, I understand the difference between option one and option two, but within each option, are they in any particular order?
Not necessarily. I tried to put them in the order that would be the least impactful to students. So tried to take that what's, what affects the classroom first and put those as low as I could on each list.
So the ones that come earlier in the list have potentially less direct impact on kids in classrooms?
That's right.
Okay.
And so depending on where you went tonight, we would probably further prioritize and redo this list if you set something different. But this is not necessarily the final list or the order that we would bring to you on February 8th.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Amundson.
I have a question about four B because the wording says close a small elementary school. I'm assuming that what that means is temporarily close it. We wouldn't be permanently closing an elementary school. We would be temporarily closing it until our enrollment numbers bounce back up, just to make it really clear.
I think there's a lot of moving parts with that. And let's just put it this way, we need to do more facilities planning for the long haul. And so it could be temporary, it could be permanent. It really would depend on what's our long-term strategy with our facilities.
And, and just to make it clear to the public, and I know this has been mentioned at previous board meetings, but not everybody watches every board meeting. So I just want to make it clear that at the time that we went out for the last building referendum, projections pointed towards us needing all of the buildings, including potentially the small elementary school that we might at some point talk about. It's the unpredictable nature of what happens because of the pandemic and our lower enrollment, which other districts are experiencing as well. Just to make it really clear for somebody who might see that and say, well, what are, what are you talking about closing a school for? We just built new ones. Just in case there's misconceptions there. I've got another question if nobody else does.
Okay, go ahead.
So I, I don't remember if this is exactly the right terminology, but is there not a law referring to maintenance of effort and student support services, special ed, that says that we cannot roll back on what we already offer students with the all of the, the items listed, no matter which, you know, classification they're under? Would any of those apply to that? Would it be considered a lessening of, of the services we provide for special ed students?
There's a few ways to make maintenance of effort. And I don't believe with what's being proposed that we're going to be in jeopardy of not meeting maintenance of effort. Because you also have to consider that our teachers, our paras that work here are going to probably have salary and benefit increases. So the costs are naturally going to go up as well. But yes, we are aware of maintenance of effort and that's why there are not deep and significant reductions really. Because we know we need to maintain.
So you're reassuring us that any of these would not cross that line?
Not at this level. I don't feel that we've, we've put forward recommendations that are going to cut so deep that we would be at risk.
Ms. McLaughlin.
John, I just have some, they're kind of technical things perhaps, but also I think it looks at clarity and transparency. On the page that has the options two A, two B, and two C. Is it? I would, I guess I would like to see this, just maybe the terminology added to a little bit to make sure that it's clear to the public who would look at this slide, particularly for something like two C for someone who doesn't really know what that means, to make sure that we add the topic of special ed into that option. Just to make it clear that it's affecting a certain population of our students, that people may be interested in knowing about those impacts. And I would say the same for two A and two B, just for people who don't know what the SSS stands for, to make that, that clear that we're talking about, again, the special ed population. If we could make those adjustments, I would encourage that.
Good point. Sometimes we get used to our own terminology and we need to be more clear. We also had a bigger working document that had more columns and so that probably would have been more obvious. But copying and pasting, we might've missed a word here or there that described something a little better.
Thank you.
I, I think I wanted, it's great that we've jumped into the specifics. One thing I didn't say at the outset is that as with our last meeting, my recommendation remains option two at the $7 million level. Again, understanding that the, the cuts listed there are illustrative and that we would welcome board member feedback on those reductions and we would be doing further analysis. I believe the lower level of reduction while appealing in many respects. It gives us more time, it gives us more chance for analysis. If we connect it to the last discussion that we just had around a levy and around the future well-being of the district to defer that, as we also saw in our last study session, increases the aggregate size of the reduction that we need to make. And so my recommendation would be the $7 million in target reductions for next year. That said, I absolutely understand if the board would choose to go lower than that or higher than that. But I should let you know that that, after a lot of discussion, not just with John, but the cabinet, has really been fantastic in putting together these painful ideas as well. The recommendation's mine, but it's very informed by the, the careful work that, that they did over the last several weeks.
Chair, I actually have a follow-up to that then? Just so that I'm clear and if it helps others. What you're saying then is really adopting option one and two?
Yeah.
Because two is an addition to one.
Thank you.
Not, not, we're not choosing between A and B.
You're right, that's clear.
Okay, I want to make sure that I understand.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Serena, Director McLaughlin. I appreciate how this has been laid out. And especially the number designation is easy to track, follow, as well as the expanded explanation currently available on Board Doc to actually look and see. And so we're being presented, actually, we've only had a few hours to actually look at this with the understanding, you're not asking us to make a decision tonight, you're just presenting us with the information. And I think this definitely positions us to with an opportunity to review, analyze. Any concerns, we should probably direct those concerns, should they go to John or you or both or neither or?
No, definitely. As usual, I always appreciate board members reaching out to the relevant cabinet member and copying me so that I was, poor John had to spend part of his vacation via Microsoft Teams, talking about budget spreadsheets with me. And so, but I think John is really our epicenter of this. And so questions for John and copying me, and then we'll certainly draw other members of the cabinet into the analysis if board members have concerns. All of this cascading to a recommendation to you on February 5th.
Melissa.
So when it says reduce positions in a programmatic area, are you saying that in Feb, at our February board meeting, we would get more specifics on what that will look like?
Director Amundson, yes, though I think none of us want someone to find out about their job at a board meeting. So we will always try and keep it as high level. But we understand that, that in tonight's data, it's very general intentionally because we're not bringing you a recommendation. But yes, we would, we would bring you enough specificity so that you would be able to know at a deeper level what the positions would be. Again, without wanting to have individuals finding out about that.
But if it was a reduction to services to a certain subgroup of students, we would want to know which
Absolutely.
which group of students that was affecting in case that did not match our priorities and values for how, how and who we want to receive services.
Absolutely, we would bring you greater level of detail. Since tonight, we're just looking for a level, we decided it was hopefully sufficient to give you the general categories. And then on the, and the eighth, we would give you more specificity.
And then the eighth, would we be able to? I know it's not the technical term, but veto if we're like, heck no, that is not a subgroup of students we want affected. At that level, we'd be able to object to a very specific. And we have been receiving some emails that I am not, not positive if they're warranted or not warranted based on whether or not that's the intended target of this vague wording. And so that's what I'm kind of going with. If, if, if we're like, yeah, this sounds great on paper, but we're like, hold, hold on, that's not the kids we, we need to be affecting right now.
The board certainly could choose to, to, to sort of borrow the idea of a line item veto and, and we would set it up so you could do that. My goal however, though, Director Amundson, would be to be in conversation with you as board members so that hopefully that would not be required and you would have a presentation on the eighth that would be reflective of what you could support. If you're, I just want to take the opportunity because I've gotten some of those emails. If, if, if what you're referring to is some concern about our newcomer center, that is not included in the discussion we're having tonight. So there's no veiled reference to that in here. All of the language was chosen carefully here such that if it says, for instance, as you were pointing out, SSS, what is that? Student Services or in the other areas. We've identified for you the appropriate areas of the district without being so specific that you can see individual positions. But there are no, there are no shadow parts of the organization that are kind of camouflaged here. And we would make very sure by the eighth that you could tell where the reductions would, would lie.
So just to be clear, if it were a reduction to the newcomer center, you would say this is a reduction?
Yes. Yes, though we're not contemplating that for this year at all. So I can already tell you that.
That was an email that was
Not sure where that came from.
And thank you for mentioning that to the public because I'll still send a response to the emails, but.
And I just want to be more clear, add more direct than that. That was some sort of rumor that was unfounded?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm not sure what the origin of that one was.
Good to know.
Chair, I do have, looking through this list and listening to John, I understood everything. The one that I made a note, and this is like Director Bartle said, we just got this today. Two B was my, the one that gave me pause is I, assuming no growth in the future of special education paraprofessional positions. I'm just wondering if that's a rational assumption? And if it, you know, we assume no growth and there's more students, does that make then a different ratio for that population? You know, more, fewer paraprofessionals for a larger number of students? And what impact that would have on that student population? That's the one thing that gave me pause.
Let me ask John to, to chime in, but let me just say, in, in putting that in the budget, we do bring you a revised budget proposal when conditions change. So this is what would be in the approved budget. Should we find that our numbers require a budget revision, we would bring you a budget revision in the course of next year. So this is, as John was explaining, what we put in the budget at the outset. But absolutely, we'd be, we'd be required to bring you a revised budget.
So it's a fair assumption at the get-go. But if enrollment in that population increased, we would then hire staff to match that increase, not just put a bunch of kids in with fewer pairs.
No, the hope and, you know, our executive director of this area, Carla Boluson and her team would, would be very creative in seeking to maximize the use of our existing staff under this scenario. Whereas in past years, we've had a bit of cushion that were planned for growth that we'd be saying, we're going to see if we can do without. John, do you want to jump in or even Carla, if you have anything else you want to add on that, that item?
Yeah, and I think the good thing or the, the thing that would happen with a budget revision is if we did get more kids, we'd also be bringing you a revenue budget revision too that reflects that, hey, we've had more kids move into the district, so we're expecting more aid from the state of Minnesota to pay for it too.
Thank you for that clarification, that, that helps me. Think about that better.
Anything else? Again, it's a lot, a lot to take in. We're going to have a lot of time to look it over, ask questions. Community is going to be involved in providing feedback.
So were you looking for direction at this point?
If board members have a general preference as to the level of reduction we should be working on, that would be incredibly helpful because we do want to begin to engage stakeholders next week. And as you saw, four million is different than seven million in the implications of some of the reductions. And I do think always getting board direction at every step of this process is invaluable. So yes, to the extent that you can give a general reaction to the, the level of reductions we should seek feedback on, that would be helpful. It's not absolutely required tonight, so.
So having said that, you earlier suggested, or your recommendation would probably be options one and two.
Yes.
Okay. And so in terms of guidance, direction, consensus, this would be our opportunity to say, you know, I'm in agreement or leaning towards options one and two myself. Is that what you're basically looking for? Well?
At minimum, Director Bartle, that you would support us going out and seek and developing specific proposals for that. But a step further of saying, yes, I'm supportive of that level of reduction is very helpful insofar as it makes clear that administration is acting under board direction as we do this difficult work.
I guess I have another follow-up to Mr. Bartle's question. How does that give us, so I understand one and two, that's clear. But the things about three A, three B, and then the options for further study, where do you want us to give you direction on those?
We're asking, thank you, Director McLaughlin, we're asking for no action on that. And those are purely illustrative of ideas that the team came up with that I did not want to recommend. And the team agreed, we are not recommending for this year. But given that it's a multi-year strategy that's required, we wanted to surface those. But none of them are being presented for even further analysis this year. The only items that we're recommending we could move into the plan for the, the upcoming school year would be the last two, which are changing our ratio for teachers at the elementary and high school level, which again, we're not recommending, but that could be a tool for getting to the level of reduction the board might want to contemplate for next year.
I think the thing that makes me sad when I look at this is even though I can understand like one I, for example, is reduce unfilled positions in special education. But I feel like we have one I, two A, two B, two C, and two L and basically four J that all I feel like we have 1I, 2A, 2B, 2C, and 2L, and basically 4J, that all reference some level of, like, para special education, like, additional supports. And I feel like, just the overview, and I wonder if the community will feel this, is like, we're targeting that particular group of students slash professionals in the schools. And I don't like the way that that feels. Not that we want to cut anyone, obviously, mind you. And I recognize the reduce this, or just don't fill these particular positions. But I also think because we offered to pay additional monies to, like, getting paraprofessionals in, and now we're saying we're going to reduce or not fill, and like, it just doesn't...I don't feel like it balances. And I also, I think, recognize, too, this is just...I mean, it's going to be hard, but I think that that part doesn't sit well with me. And I know that we're not looking really at option three or four just yet, but 4J is an absolutely no-go for me. The reduce out-of-classroom student supports like social workers, school counselors, student resiliency specialists, security paraprofessionals, and equity specialists, like, those are the things we...we need those right now. And we talked about this with...right on cue, when Kathy was talking about the Minnesota principals survey, that mental health, both for the students and the staff, is so paramount right now, and that we are needing to sort of wrap those services around everyone, regardless of how much time they're spending in a classroom. And so I will just leave my comments there. Like, this weighs heavy. That makes me uncomfortable, and I'm anticipating certain feedback from the community about that.
And I would just like to add to that briefly, that I have the same concern. And also, if we're looking at alternatives to the SRO program, this is where the...we may want to need to increase this, not decrease it, if we're looking at that.
And to be very clear, that is not a recommendation at this point, because I'm guessing that most of us on the board would agree that that is critically important, that we keep those support people there. But it's not part of option one or two.
I just...I think it's easy to, you know, for the community in particular, to see the people who are in, like, higher-level positions, like, well, why don't we just cut them? They make so much money. But then you're going to, like, get down to the paraprofessionals who make, you know, dollars per hour, right? And that we're also struggling to, like, keep them in, and that's where we're cutting. And I just...that doesn't...it's not...it doesn't make intuitive sense to the community, and I can certainly understand why.
I would agree in general with just the idea of taking a step back and examining whether it's a proportional reduction to special education services, whether the unfilled positions, obviously. I mean, that just makes a ton of sense. But just a request that an extra evaluation, like, Director Garcia...
Unduly.
Yep, pointed out. I would rather see us dive into, you know, heating and cooling set points before affecting a population. But all of the unfilled positions, that's like, an obvious one to me. I'm comfortable with pretty much everything on the list. I mean, there are certain ones that I wish weren't on the list. But in general, I'm comfortable with both of these options, and even going into the next tier in terms of direction, because these seem to me to be difficult, obviously, for our staff. But keeping it away from the classroom as much as possible, it seems to be quite in the spirit of what we discussed before. So I'm comfortable.
So I'm hearing two board members who are suggesting that superintendent and the cabinet's position, that we have one and two considered together. Is that a consensus? I think that's the direction.
Probably three. No, I just want to answer the issue you just raised. With the, as I mentioned, the real careful work of cabinet members and others, the positions we chose were also chosen for their least anticipated impact on direct students. So while there are position categories there, to the issue of proportionality, and this is a much longer discussion, these are the areas in which our staff has grown much faster than other categories. So we've added a lot of staff in these categories. Now, that doesn't necessarily...that doesn't mean that those additions have not been valid and needed. But one of the first strategies that we looked at, that John looked at, was reducing the budget by percent growth in the budget over the last 10 years, which we chose not to do, because that's not related to student outcomes. But these were areas that we're talking about now, paraprofessionals, special education, where we've had a lot of growth. And so we're hoping that, in a very limited way, there can be some targeted reductions that don't directly impact kids. But I do take the point. The challenge, of course, of teaching positions is that it gets into the complexity of reductions that impact class size. Those are here. They're not here, at least in this current proposal for next year, but they're looming large in year two. So I really appreciate the direction. We'll keep it strongly in mind. I don't want it to look like one job category is being singled out, and I can see how that might be there. But we had a lot of people say, yeah, this is going to be tough, but we could still provide services at this level. But we'll take that feedback and take a look at the specifics.
Director Kelly, I actually want to clarify that, just to make sure that I'm understanding in my head, because we kind of blended some things when we were talking about that. Are you talking there about the special ed and the paraprofessionals growing, or are you including things like the social workers, the school counselors, the equity specialists? Is that all one big bucket?
Our support staff has grown faster than other categories in our staff, and we need to do some real analysis. But John had some very illustrative, interesting data on growth. And so broadly stated, yes. You can see me hesitating, because I don't want to suggest that that was invalid growth, and I want to denigrate those folks. But those have been fast-growing parts of our district. And we'd be glad...I know John had a good chart at some point. We'd be glad to revisit that. And we need to...we need to take a look at that collectively for the long term, as we look at those...where are we growing, so that we can get ourselves into a different, more sustainable place financially?
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Nathan.
I don't know if I missed this. Apologies for my absence. But do any of these reductions give us the opportunity to look structurally at how these expenditures in these categories can be made in the future? Or are they just, this is what we can do for this year? I mean, do they give us any enlightenment as to a broader strategy for budgeting?
Director Nathan, that really is in year two of this plan. I think in the last study session we took, and it was Director Amundson who put it, I'd rather see you reduce than eliminate in year one. And I think we took that to heart, in that this is...these are meaningful, difficult reductions. There are reductions in some unfilled positions. There aren't real positions in here. When you saw some of the options for year two, though, where we start to look at fundamental questions of, like, which schools get transportation, what are our ratios, those are structural issues. And so those are ones where I would suggest that our planning process needs to begin very, very early, to begin to consider what those options mean. And I'll just give one example. One reduction that I deeply considered because there was, and it's not here, is a major shift in how we're using compensatory education revenue, which is state funding generated by low-income students. The reason I'm not recommending that is that I think, for instance, last board meeting where we heard about the really extraordinary work that is being done at John Marshall around catching students up with double blocks of mathematics, that's being paid for by their compet. And I just did not see, in the tight timelines we have now, how we make a cut like that and not find out that Jake is not doing there what we were all very impressed he's doing. So...but those are year two more systemic issues, where there's looking at our...also, the categorical dollars that are not in the general fund, but that are designed to supplement. So we have the compensatory education revenue, that we have flexibility. We also have federal revenue, that our school boundary changes and school structure changes also necessitate some adjustment on next year. But we could take a very different approach to allocating our Title I dollars, for instance. So I think the structural work lies just ahead.
And again, I don't know if this question was asked already, but Mr. Carlson, the governor, put out a proposal today regarding asking for 2% more on the formula. If that were successful in this legislative session, would it have an impact on these numbers?
Yes. An extra couple percent is probably an extra couple million dollars. And so, you know, that could...that could help maybe reduce next year's cuts, or we could take part of that this year. I think Superintendent and I have not had a chance to talk about that proposal and what that would mean, so I don't want to get too far ahead. But it could be a balancing act, for sure.
But very possible. We wouldn't know that until May, June, even July.
Right.
Okay.
That's right.
So not terribly helpful unless it were something we could restore quickly.
Right.
Certainly nothing...